Okay. I'm going to call to order the regular board meeting in the Paradise Irrigation District, Wednesday, May 15th at 6:30 PM. Georgiana, can I have a roll call?
Director Fleischer?
Here.
Director Hunt? Director Hunt is down at this point. President Corolla?
Here.
Director Cala?
Here.
Vice President Duncan?
Here.
Okay. As Georgiana-
At this present time.
As Georgiana said, Director Hunt is not here right at this point. He is volunteering some of his time to the Paradise Ballet and will be here at probably about a quarter to nine, just about in time for Lee and Roe to do their presentation on our process water presentation. I'm going to ask the board members to keep their comments short and sweet tonight. I do not feel good, and that's me, but I want to try to get through all that, everything else in the meeting, I want to try to get done by 8:45 so that when Lee and Roe comes in, we can do that, and then go on to our closed session that we'll have at the end. So, do I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar? Or is there anybody that would like to have something removed?
Oh, I wanted to comment on page 31.
Okay, we can just comment. Do I have a motion to-
I move we approve the consent calendar.
I'd like to withdraw one or make a comment on it, on page 59, or-
Well, you can comment on it if you-
AF.
Do you want it removed?
Do you want us- do you want it removed, or you just want to make-
I want it removed with consent calendar.
Okay.
Okay, which one was that? F?
AF, yes.
F, okay.
A and F?
No, no, 2F. I'll get it out here.
2F, okay. You said AF, okay, yeah.
I realize that.
2F, okay.
So, do I have a motion-
Okay, I move that we approve the consent calendar, removing 2F.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, you have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And so, that passes 4-0 on there with one absent. We can go ahead and go right into your question in F right now, can't we? Yeah.
The reason I thought we would move that to talk about, I understand the redo of the wise water use regulations and all, but since we have a conservation committee, I know that we're going to be coming up with some other suggestions for the wise use of water, and perhaps some regulations or educational things, so I would like to defer voting on that for right now, unless there's a better reason for it.
Well, these are guidelines that we have adopted annually since I've been here.
Yes.
And so, if you don't adopt them, it's going to take a while for the commi- the conservation committee-
Yes.
-to get rolling and meet and figure out what we want to do, so those regulations wouldn't be in effect for a while.
The one main regulation is that we-
Why do we have to re-institute them every year? Why don't we-
Oh, excuse me.
Why can't we just have them from year-round usage as far as between noon and 6:00 or whatever it is? Why do we have to do it every year?
Because, in my opinion, we are in a perpetual drought at PID.
We're in a perpetual drought all the time.
Every year's water that can be conserved is something that may save our bacon in the following year, so by bringing it to the board's attention and the public's attention annually, it's a reminder in that respect.
I understand that completely, Georgiana. I completely agree with you on that. But I know one of the things that, I've only had a couple of discussions with other people on that, but we're going to be introducing through, for our approval, the board's approval, on this conservation committee, some things that will really create a wise, if people follow, a wise use of water. Now, if we approve this, and then after the committee gets running, and I would hope by July, we will have some recommendations, can we add that to them?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I would fully hope that the committee expands on this effort and-
We're going to be-
We really only have two issues right now that are two-
Yeah, that's-
Two rules right now.
We used to have a couple more, and they kept getting pulled off by board members-
Yeah. So, I think we want to implement the noon to 6:00.
In other words, when we, our first presentation or proposal by the committee, well, then we could put that on as an action item, and if the board approves on that.
Absolutely.
Are you going to ask for the, I'm looking at Ward, community, not community, but public thoughts on this?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, yeah. If the public wants to comment on this.
Isn't this thing out of date?
This is the same one we used-
It says only, "Second and subsequent violations observed by a PID representative result personally delivered or mail-written notice of consumption twice our highest rate." And we recent, you know, we have this new electronic meters reading that would actually tell us if somebody was using their water in office, wouldn't it?
Well, using water, but, this is hosing down your hot driveway instead of using a broom or a blower, right?
Well, I have, I will not direct staff without board's direction to use the metering system for policing water use. So, I, that's certainly something the board can take action on and tell us to analyze that. The system's capable of it, but I'm not sure you were ready to take that leap.
But without, without visual confirmation, we are just assuming that they were out there using the water wiggle instead of actually watering foliage or whatever they choose to water. If they choose to water their acre's worth of land and use more water than normal, that's their choice, correct?
But our system could actually detect that excessive use-
12 to 6.
Between noon and 6:00.
Okay.
If we had a water shortage, I think-
I pretty much accept that that those kind of things would be discussed by the board if we were in a situation where we didn't have a full reservoir and we were contemplating cutbacks.
This might be, this might be a next-year conversation.
I agree completely, George, with your thought on that, because I think we're in a virtual drought all the time. And the reason is, you know, our watershed is not very big. If you look at watersheds, you know, and there's no snowpack even when we have lots of snow, when we need it, so we're in a virtual drought all the time, and that's one of the things I hope we do, is we come up with a better source. And, but, were you going to ask for public comment on this?
Yeah, I did, but we got off, we got off.
Is there public time or not?
Sure, sure.
Good evening, Board, Ward Habley. On behalf of the public and future committee interested in saving water, it's just one of the resources everybody should be concerned with saving, and I do have some issues with the way this reads. For instance, I think everybody that passes through Paradise should be concerned with wasted, whether it's water, electricity, or what have you. And frankly, when I see a PID truck come up Clark Road and they have passed Calvary Baptist Church and not stopped to say at 2:00 in the afternoon, "Why are your sprinklers on?" I'm a little concerned. I think it's everybody's responsibility to look at this issue and see, what is it that I can do? So, I don't think it has to be a PID employee to come forward to say, "Whoops, what happened here? You got a broken sprinkler. Can I help you? Can I help you call your landscaper? Is there some way that we can get to the heart of the matter?" And that's really education. All of you that have raised kids, don't you tell them first before you scold them? You have to learn the right way before you understand what the penalty is.
Mm-hmm.
It's the same thing in business. You train an employee to understand the right way to do the job before you discipline him for not doing it. We have to do the same thing with our customers, and simply to come back to them and say, "Hey, we've got the same regulations again this year that we've had before. Guess what? Now that you've wasted water, we're going to double your bill." "What? Double my bill? Why would you do that?"
Yeah.
That's not quite fair. Let's get the educational component out there. Let's get the public to understand what their responsibilities are and how we, as an entity, PID, can get them to do that. And I'm not saying we're going to buy them low-flush toilets and low-flow showerheads, but we're going to give them some education. And I think that's one of the things we want to do as quickly as possible through the new committee this being formed.
Absolutely.
I thank you, Ward. I agree on that. Chairman Corolla appointed me as president of the committee, and he's part of it, and you're the first member at large, and we have one item we're voting on tonight.
No, we-
But we, uh-
He hasn't been appointed yet.
He appointed him.
No, I asked if he wanted to be on it, so I haven't appointed him just yet.
Okay, because I, he was wanting to be.
Because we waited till after, we asked the committee at large.
Yeah, if you remember, the way our rules are written, the president of the board can appoint board members to a committee, but in all of our history, it takes a full board to appoint a public member to a committee.
Okay.
And that's why the actions on-
Well, then I erred, because I told Ward that he didn't need to fill out the papers, because as far as I was concerned, he was already a member. We have a thing that he wrote-
He's in the agenda, so he's-
He wrote to you, so he is.
Yes, yes.
We could have voted on him if we voted on the other pair.
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Sounds good. Getting back to this, because I know that you asked-
Would have reached out to him if, if he wasn't in the running.
Okay. Was there any other public member that wanted to comment on this?
I want to make a comment.
Go ahead.
If we were, if we, if we were in dire straits of water, then I think we would probably be doing this, but, but we do have, it's a mixed emotion, because we do have plenty of water right now, and if somebody wants to water the wrong time of the day, he's making a mistake, but it's going to, he's going to pay for it. And that's revenue to us. Today, the Veterans Hall was watering at 12:30. And I thought to myself, gee, those guys shouldn't be doing that, but they are buying water from us, which we have plenty of right now, so it was mixed emotions. Now, if it was a leak, I would have called it, I've called in, I've called in at least a dozen leaks, even when I wasn't on the board. Whenever I see a leak, I would call PID and say, "There's a leak." There was one up on the, at the hospice, a cup, about a year ago, that I called in. It was a big gusher. But, but the problem is, is that we, we do need the revenue, too. So, if you've got plenty of water, then you're not as strict with the rules. That's the way we've looked at it.
How many years have we done this?
Long as I've been here, probably.
Exactly.
Ray probably started-
When do we usually run it? Between June 1st to?
Well, it's a, it's a continuous rule. It's just readopted every year.
I thought we only ran it, though, I thought last year it read that we ran it from like June 1st to October 1st or something like that. I thought was when we had the-
Not the way I remember it.
Okay.
We have the rule there, so-
That's my, that's my bad understanding then on that.
We got that rule there, so we can enforce. If we didn't have this, we couldn't do anything to anybody.
And I would think most people, if we did witness a violation, I think most people would be compliant in their first, there's no reason to have to water it 1:30 in the afternoon. There's, you can water it 1:30 at night, just as easy, so.
Especially if you tell them that they're hurting themselves by doing it.
Yes.
I have no problem voting for this. I just wanted to get it out and talk about it because of our new conservation committee, but when we come up with some suggestions, and hopefully in July, we will have some suggestions, we can add them to this, or amend this, or someone's-
Pretty much, the only thing a board's ever stuck with is the Prop. 218 rate process. Anything else you adopt can pretty much be amended as you see fit.
So, do I have a motion to approve?
I so move.
Item 2F. Do I have a second?
Go ahead, it's your turn.
My turn? I, I thought I seconded the last one.
It's all right, you get two in a row.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, you get two in a row.
They want to get your name in the-
All in-
Yeah. For something progressive.
Right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Passes 4-0.
Did you want to comment about something that was on? Yeah, I wanted to comment about something. It's going to be on the agenda later, so that's, I just want to make, on page 31, there's, I'll just tell you before, I met with George and Bill Taylor to talk about the priorities between fixing pumps and doing this water treatment plan, and they told me all sorts of information that I didn't know, and I'm sure we're going to get the same report back here when we get to it. But here, on the treatment staff report of April 2013, just for the directors and the audience's benefit, what we are going to be concerned with to, to qualify for EPA standards, right, Bill?
Yes.
Is going to be the raw water turbidity, treated water turbidity, treated water chlorine, and these ranges in here, and evidently, we're already in violation in somewhat sense.
Not for those three, no.
Not for those three. We're all right for those three? Okay. Okay. You want to write the formula out for the-
No. I can write the word out.
Yeah, the word?
Okay, well, any rate, those are the things we're going to be concerned with later, so that was important to see, that you could see that the staff is already doing some monitoring work, and we talked about additional monitoring. And that'll all become, I'm sure, come out later in the meeting. That's the only reason why I wanted to comment on it.
Okay, so with that portion done, public participation. Individuals be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda. Although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda, comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for the public to comment, for the public comment on agenda items will be provided at the time they are discussed by the board, with comments limited to five minutes per agenda. Is there anybody that had anything that they wanted to comment on that is not on the agenda at this time? See a large show of hands out there, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number four. Committee reports and presentations, board oral reports regarding the representation of commissions and committees. Looks like we have Butte-Lafco, which is going to be Director Duncan.
Okay, we met on the, on Thursday, May 2nd, in Oroville, and we approved the, we approved the final budget. There was no comments from any outside sources, and so the budget was approved. And like I said, the, a fee went up percentage-wise, but because it's based on revenue, our, the PID's fee actually went down, which is a little concerning to me, because it seems if you raise the rate, you should get more money, but they didn't in this case, which was good for us. And then we are still dealing with the city of Chico on the extension of services, and we've, much to their dislike, we've given them six months to do annexation of this property. If they don't, then we're, then we're going to do whatever we can to stop them from doing, from doing outside services of their, of their entity. And that was basically it. I also had a Cal-Lafco meeting on Friday, the 3rd. It was in Marysville, and basically, we, it's, Lafco, Cal-Lafco has been in, in business for 50 years. This is our 50th year. So, we've, we've designed a new logo, which puts 50 on it and everything, and it's a very nice looking logo. And then we're having our convention in, at Lake Tahoe in August, and I'm on the awards committee for that. And we're, I'm trying to think what, I, I, in the middle of the meeting, I got a bug and I had to leave before I ate, and I just barely got home, because I was very weak, and I left my whole agenda there, it just left. I just ran out of the room. But anyway, so I'm trying to think of what we did, but basically, it was just housekeeping. Wasn't a lot to do.
Thank you, Vice President Duncan. General managers' report. George, regale us.
All right.
All right. All right.
I'm going to give it there. There we go. Well, yeah, my written report is a little brief. Couple highlights. In the June agenda, we will, we're doing a little final discussion. It will bring on the agenda potentially the town is interested in seeing if we, if the district's interested in committing our $32,000 estimate for paving the trenches on Billy to an overlay project that they would take on and pay the difference.
Oh, so they will pay the difference up to the $90,000?
And the $90,000 was our estimate if we did the work with our people in hiring a sole proprietor that would operate the trench box.
Someone like Dave Gaylord or something like that?
Reality, we're guessing 110 to 160. For some reason, the town thinks it'd be cheaper than that. But any rate, it would be assured agreement that we agree to commit the funds if they want to overlay rather than us replacing all of our temporary paving with permit paving on Billy, so.
We haven't, we haven't dug that up yet, the temporary?
No.
That was the, just, okay.
The town of-
Did, did, isn't only paved the main line trench on that?
The trunk line, they paved.
Yeah, the trunk line has been paved. So, it's only the crossings and the hydrant laterals. Did they do hydrant laterals?
No, we didn't.
We didn't, so.
We did all levels. They just, we did the trunk line and the permanent base on Billy.
This is the, this is the-
And the side way also, but we're talking-
Skyway Lucky John direction?
Yeah.
Yeah, like, towards Lucky John direction on Billy? Yeah, okay.
From about Hosee.
Hosee on, yeah, exactly. That's where we said, yeah.
So, we'll see how that works out. I want to commend Keith and his crew. They're, the town is trying to do a micro-
Micro overlay, yeah.
Overlay on Skyway.
Yeah.
So, we're doing all our efforts to get all our crossings in prior to them doing that work. It was going to be scheduled for August, now it's maybe into August, but we'll see.
They approved it la, they approved it last night.
Did they?
A firm out of Nevada, and they're going to do Pearson, Skyway, and Clark, and $190-some-thousand.
$297,000.
Oh, it's $297,000? I thought, I thought it was one of them.
That's a deal.
Yeah.
If Billy costs 110 to 160, and we can get three major roads done for $197,000?
This is a micro over-
It's micro, this is micro.
Slurry coat.
We probably won't even know, you probably won't even know it's there.
Fancy slurry coat.
Yeah.
Billy hardly meets the definition of a paved road.
A paved road, I know, yeah, that's a, it's a root road.
Yeah, and that's what we had to put into our estimates. You know, they were looking for a 10th overlay, and I think we were looking, we estimated material-wise, two tenths to 25 hundreds overlay, just because of the dips and valleys, there's going to be a lot of excess material there.
But if all they're asking of us is to commit our $32,000, then really, it would not be our problem as to-
Nope, wouldn't be our problem anymore.
We've satisfied their requirement, and we were going to be out the $32,000 in the first place.
Yep. Yep, so.
So.
We'll see where it ends up. We need to do some cross-checking with our grant and make sure we were lined up correctly there, and so we'll have it all ready for the June agenda. I did put a note in about not selecting the lowest bidder for the insulation work, and since I put that in, Jim Ladreni made further contact with the low bidder. He's more comfortable with their, that they have the correct understanding of prevailing wage, and so we were going to proceed with the low bidder after all. So, that's where we're at with that. Still nothing on water rights. Been working with Neil and treatment staff on the process water recycle stuff, trying to explore different options, and after tonight's presentation to you, we'll hear your feedback, comments, questions, and then I'll meet with my staff. We'll kick it around, and then we'll probably have another meet with the consultants before they come back and present an update to you that would take board action. So, we're looking at probably a special meeting in a couple of weeks, unless it takes a little longer than it may be the June board meeting. I'm trying to get caught, I got a little caught up from my vacation, so shortly, we'll be having PR committee meetings, talking about the community relations plan, and we have some more work on the administration personnel committee that we need to prep for, and we'll set a committee date for that in the near future as well. That's about all I have.
Question. In the register, there was a damage to the temporary fence?
Yeah, well, I thought someone, yeah.
And I was wondering, I hadn't heard about it, and what was, what's the story on it?
Temporary seat tank?
Seat tank.
Security fence, I don't think it's temporary fence.
Security fence.
Security fence.
Oh, okay.
That was seat tank. There was a gentleman that had a reaction to his medications and drove in to the fence over here.
Oh, okay.
Bunch of fence out, so we had to do a quick contract. We used to, did a, actually did an amendment to our contract with this fence contractor, because it's the same style and same specs and everything, so we get that re-secured quickly. So, we had it re-secured within a week, I believe, probably, and we got police report on it, and it's getting filed through insurance and-
So, we're getting, we're getting reimbursed for it? Good.
Hopefully, our insurance will-
Our, or their, how about theirs? Yes.
We have received partial reimbursement, and then, you know, they're working with that gentleman's insurance company, and when they settle with them, then we'll, you know, get full reimbursement.
Yeah, that, I was hoping that it wasn't a hit and run.
No, it was not a hit and run.
Good.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody out there that's working hard to make sure that we've done as much as we possibly can on the roads. They're planning on repaving, so that the last thing anybody wants to see is they repave a road, and then everybody goes and digs it up right after that, so we'd like it to be some other entity other than us that's digging it up.
There is another project that the town's doing at the Pearson intersection with the school.
The intermediate school, the Signal.
He's been working with that contractor, getting a lot of our stuff taken care of. We did the main line three years ago, I think.
It seems like it, George, but I think it was actually about eight years ago.
Really?
A lot of things seem like this here.
Yeah, was that just, that was just last week, right? Yeah.
People are jumping out there to get ahead of that signalization project.
Yeah.
It never happens, but there's a couple of meters to move and-
That's, exactly, yeah. We have a minimal scope in that.
I don't know what the schedule is on Caltrans. I mentioned it, I think, last month, but they're doing an overlay on 191, which is Clark Road up through the intersection of Pearson and Clark. So, we're kind of, Neil dealt with all of the foul boxes, but we're also discussing some work we need to do, maybe with some older main line that's going to end up getting overlaid, so we're still working that out.
When I was on the town council, I tried to pass, have them pass a fee that whenever somebody cuts into a new road, that they have to pay a fee to do it. And that way, at the time, it would have cost PID a lot of money, but it wasn't going to cost, it was, it was a way to get, keep people from cutting into new roads, because it really infuriates me to have a brand-new road and then see people digging holes in it.
There's a lot of jurisdictions that do that, but when it comes to local government, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, local government to local government, at least when I was in Oroville, they can't charge you a flat fee per square foot. They can only charge you the inspection cost, and so it's a little different, it would have been a little different even if you passed it for, for what PID would have had to deal with.
The way we were going, I wanted to do it was that you had to get a permit to cut into the road, and there was a fee for the permit. And I was thinking of getting PG&E.
But there's not a lot of new roads in Paradise, so.
Well, any road, in any road, any road, any road that's paved, if you cut into it, you got to get a permit, and then hopefully, after a few years, you have enough money to overlay the whole thing again. But I was the only one that wanted to do that, so.
Well, if that's all you had, George, thank you for that, and we will move on to item number six, which is a legal report. Dustin, what do you have for us?
I'd like to take a few minutes. There's a bill, it's called AB 145. It's cleared a couple committees. Basically, what the proposal is, is to move the drinking water program from the Department of Public Health to the State Water Resources Control Board. The impetus behind this is that the public health folks have kind of been a little lax or, or maybe slow in issuing grant funds that they oversee to kind of communities that are primarily agricultural that have treated water needs. So that kind of offended some of these legislators and all of a sudden their response is, we're going to take this entire program from you and move it to the State Water Resources Control Board. This has the entire water community pretty much universally opposed to it. The one, the main reason is, is, one, it's the, the Department of Public Health is actually a pretty good organization to deal with, at least on the regulatory side and staff could comment on that.
Very much.
The, the state board is stereotypically horrible to deal with. They're, they're not very responsive. They have more of a, a fee or a penalty type mindset, whereas public health is more of a collegiate type atmosphere, is my experience. So Aqua is kind of taking the lead on this as opposing the legislation. The Brown administration, from what I hear, hasn't really given its opinion on whether this is something it's, they support or not. But it's definitely something to, to look at and possibly oppose if it becomes necessary.
Will this be something that we need to get in on part of the class or we'll just piggyback on the decision of Aqua or whatever?
Aqua would probably send out a form letter and it would be the type of thing where come to the board and the board could then decide whether they would want to sign it, put it on the PID's letterhead. I'm guessing, that hasn't come out yet, has it?
I almost got one, I think it was close.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if I can get a nod on the board's head, I'll send the letter as soon as I get it, I'll wait and, because usually, I'm on the Aqua Region Two Legislative, I get the legislative updates and, we have this legislation and they want the board to oppose it, but I haven't really, you never have time to have you guys take action. It makes it a little more difficult to comfortably send the letter, but.
This has also come out in the agricultural press and I think almost all the rural districts are against it.
Yeah. Very few people are in favor of it, except the legislators in Sacramento. The, the other thing that I would comment on lastly is if you kind of have a conspiratorial mind, you may be thinking that this is a preliminary move to regulate groundwater as a, as a statewide resource. And you would, it would be just like surface water rights, you'd need to get a permit to extract groundwater. You would have a certain water right that, that you would have to abide by and you'd have regulations and penalties if you ever exceeded the terms of your groundwater right. So, that's another.
And that would be on a residential individual basis, do you think, that they would issue those?
Yeah.
Oh, my lord.
Yeah, it could go that deep.
What kind of revenue do they get out of this? There's obviously got to be a, a dollar sign behind it.
They'll charge a fee.
Well, the fee, but are they picking up revenue that the public health?
Just, just moving, no, it's, it's probably revenue neutral, but in the long run, because of the different cultures of the departments, I think it would be more expensive for the regulated entities like, like PID.
Well, they got to foresee some kind of dollar sign in it, otherwise why would they, why would they want to take on the?
Yeah, I don't know, I, they're claiming it's revenue neutral, but I kind of doubt that.
Yeah, yeah. My car's revenue neutral unless I go eighty-five miles an hour, then it becomes revenue generating, you know, so.
Are environmental groups supporting this move or?
You know, a lot of the kind of social justice type organizations, they're in favor of it, primarily because of the supposed impetus that these agricultural communities that have very poor water quality, they haven't been able to get the funds, these grant funds that are available. So they're kind of, they're in favor of it just to get the money flowing to these impoverished communities.
That was Aqua Alliance, has anybody heard what they, or have they?
That's what you said there.
They haven't gotten to this kind of stuff.
I don't think they have a position on this that I'm aware of, they're too busy fighting transfers.
Oh, okay.
And I am too.
And, and most of those environmental community issues are Southern California, that's where you've got a lot of your groundwater contamination issues for drinking water as opposed to, you don't see that in the north.
Cent, it's Central Valley, west side of the, you know, Westlands Water District area, those types of areas, where it's very poor groundwater quality.
Chester County was talking about selling water to Southern California.
Anderson, Cottonwood, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're meeting tonight, I think.
I've already gotten a text, they're through okay.
They're also outside this county, you can't do it in this county.
No.
Is that all?
That's all.
Thank you very much. Number seven, old business, we have none, so we'll move on to number eight. These are the items we need to get through before eight forty-five, which we should probably be able to do. Item eight A in new business is irrigation definition, review and consider adopting the change to the PID Rules and Regulations, Section five point one two. Irrigation accounts as presented and to indicate that no adjustments to customer bills will be made for past use of water under the new definition. This has to do, I believe, with what we talked about last month.
Yeah, it was in March, actually.
March, okay.
In March.
Time flies when you're having fun.
The agenda item was a customer appeal and the board kind of expanded on that by changing the definition and I was concerned that the public didn't have a good understanding of what you were actually talking about on the agenda. So after confirming with Dustin, we decided it was best just to take another formal action to make sure you're still comfortable. And also, we had a irrigation, a potential, a customer that has a meter that serves a parcel that could potentially be an irrigation account under your new definition and, and so that concerned me a bit because of the fact that the whole topic was residential irrigation for the whole night. So I wanted to confirm that that's your understanding and agreement, that your definition change applied to whether it's irrigation or residential irrigation.
So.
I, I'm confused.
Well, I was gonna say.
Which is very possible to do, but I still don't understand what you just told me.
Well, we, there's two different types of irrigation accounts. There's a regular irrigation account and there's a residential irrigation account. Residential irrigation accounts apply to parcels that have a residence on the property and they also irrigate lands. And then an irrigation account is a meter that serves a parcel that has no residences and solely for the purpose of irrigating crops.
Such as Nobles?
Such as Nobles.
Nobles, yeah, lower field or, or, okay.
So when you, when you change the definition as a board and no longer required that a person commercially sell their crop at two or more acres.
This was when we talked about Eddie Sanchez.
Yes.
This is Eddie's property that we made that decision on.
Then that potentially had impacts to others, because a residential irrigation account has a different rate because they pay for a set amount of water every month, month in and month out, that takes care of the use of that household. A straight irrigation account only pays a meter size fee and then a rate per unit fee, which is much less than what we charge our residential customers. So.
I, I got another question, the irrigate, cemetery district. Of course, has more than a few acres and grows grass. Which rate are they under, they don't, nobody lives there, of course, alive at any rate.
They're a business rate.
They're a business.
More than likely, they're a business rate.
Which is another rate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why wouldn't they qualify?
Only have three rates and you want us to formalize a fourth rate then?
No, no, no.
We're just clarifying the. Clarifying two rates.
We have lots of rates. We have multifamily, we have business, we have ag, or irrigation, we have residential irrigation.
We have like nine, don't we, something like that, yeah.
Oh, we're doing today.
There's a lot.
The two agricult, the two agricultural ones we're talking about. But why wouldn't the cemetery go for the full agricultural rate?
The cemetery wouldn't qualify, even under your new definition, the cemetery.
What are they growing?
They're not, well, they're growing grass.
But for, for a commodity?
You changed the definition to say any legal agricultural endeavor.
Oh.
So if they were grazing cattle over the bodies, then they would qualify for that rate.
They did, they did have llamas one time. Part of their robbery.
I, I gotta have to abstain from this thing. I just picked up the lease on the property for some of the cemetery district that used to have the llamas, both the folks passed away and the llamas are gone. And there is PID water there in the account and then I have more than two acres and I graze sheep. So I think I have a wee bit of a conflict of interest.
Is this on row? This is the parcel down on row?
Yeah, it's a parcel on row, there's thirty some acres there.
Yeah, yeah.
But I have three acres at home, so under this thing, I better just sit here and listen to the rest of the conversations and you guys vote on it. I have a conflict of interest.
So basically, we're just.
That's his call.
Yeah, I, I think you do. So what, what is your, are you on residential irrigation currently?
Yeah, I'm on residential right now, but it, with this understanding, I could possibly go to this rate. And I, and the same thing with the llamas, I've been wondering what the rate is there, I don't know, I think there's no buildings, no occupants there, I have no idea what the rate is. But at the same token, I've been playing part of it going, geez, I could irrigate this over here and I'm going, well, I'm supposed to pay the bill, the district pays the bill, the cemetery, and then they're going to bill me, so there's a meter there and all that, so.
Well, if, the rule is if you have a financial interest in the decision of the board, potentially, then, and, and if you were to have a lower bill, that would be considered a financial interest.
Interest, exactly.
Then you should probably abstain.
Yeah, so I'm going to abstain from any more discussion.
Thank you, Director Kellogg, for, for pointing that out.
When we did new rates, it affected all of us, Director.
There's an exception to that.
There's an exception to that, yeah, yeah. So all we're doing is just defining the irrigation accounts, we're not changing anything, we are just making sure that.
Both agriculture.
You are confirming your earlier decision.
Decision.
And confirming to staff that it applies to both irrigation and residential irrigation, as well as confirming that to the public.
And I think that was what we intended.
Yes.
Let me introduce myself, same problem. You're where I have twelve acres, in fact, we were going to be selling it and I was going to move someplace else in Division Five. But we're not going to be selling it, we're going to be staying there for quite some time. And I have an inch and a half meter that we installed in nineteen forty-nine or fifty, in fact, I ran the pipe myself, welding it down the hill by hankies to there. And of course, it was agriculture, in fact, my house is built on our old bull pasture and we would irrigate about seven or eight acres there. And with the old deal before this, it had to be a crop. Well, I was running livestock and I had a certain number of crops and at one time I had five acres of stuff under, but I'm not concerned about that. And most of the stuff that we have there now is four H. But anyway, so I most likely have to abstain too on this, Mr. President.
Did that, did that sound like it?
But, but, let me finish up here. So I mean, this is kind of one that's, I've had forever, well, nineteen fifty, forty-nine or fifty, we put that in fifty-one, before I went into service. But what I thought we changed here, the last one, and it stays here, always before it was a crop. You know, and then we discussed, discussed that and where we came up with, the district rules is defined as any legal agricultural endeavor and that's what we came up with at the last meeting, is that not correct? Yeah, okay. And I, and I agree with that, you know, because it doesn't have to be a crop. Quite often you use a crop, the livestock consume it and that's what we've been doing at our place forever. But one of the things that I'm concerned with, and we have one of the people out here, one of the nicest, many niche market agricultural operations besides Nobles, which is much larger, would be the Alvis, which is back here. And with this, and he has more than two acres and he sells it and he has a steady string of people going down there and he, just a beautiful spot, all you got to do is drive down, turn on Row Road and it's been that way as long as I remember because I used to live next door to him. And for whatever reason, they've got a couple of meters and one of them, his dad was using and I can remember that when his dad was still alive, well, I guess the PID went down there and talked him out of it. You know, talked to his dad to shut it off because he really, because of the age like I am now, was not able to do it. But he has a meter that runs through the house property, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, on here. Now what difference does it make to us if they're irrigating that two acres of garden wherever we come off of their pipeline? Does it make any difference to us?
It does make a difference to us.
Okay, now, what if we go back and hook up the pipeline, the, to the meter that's still operating, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, that they were irrigating with forever?
Well, I think that's the understanding of what was going to happen.
Okay, good, I just wanted to do that.
Because he's the one and it would be, that's why I said, this meter serves a parcel with no residence, it's going to be an irrigation account because you, as a board, did not require that you grow a crop for sale any longer. It was any agricultural endeavor and you further explain that by even if you're growing two acres of vegetables and giving them all away, you considered that an agricultural endeavor. So that is what we were trying to implement, but it wasn't clear in March that that applied to irrigation account.
Well, I, I.
Bill has a conflict because he may have the parcel that he's doing with his business. You may have a conflict, but only if you were going to switch to a residential irrigation account, because you're not in there that currently, correct? You're just a normal residential.
A normal resident, even though I have an inch and a half meter.
So if you were to vote on this and then turn around and make application to us to turn into a residential irrigation account, then you're going to benefit.
A residential or an agricultural?
Residential irrigation.
Because your property is, because your house.
Because you are irrigating more than two acres and you also have a residence on the property.
Okay.
That's the other aspect here. You expand the definition, all of a sudden more people are going to say, hey, I want to take advantage of this reduced price, so. I asked George, we don't really know the exposure to this, we don't think it's huge, but.
There's not a lot of places that have two acres of potential irrigation.
Like I have eight hundred feet of pipe to get to my house, because we're down there in the corner, you know, and it's come across there. And I used to hook onto it, irrigate all the time before we built the home there in seventy-four. Yeah, I know. But if I ever wanted to do that, how would I do that? Would I have to put another meter in or?
No, no, if you, if you, you could move to a residential irrigation account and then you, what you do is you pay a larger monthly service fee and all of your water is at the ag rate, which is considerably less than our first tiers, thirty.
I'm not on a, I, I guess look that up, am I on a residential account now? Or what am I?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
So the only time that he could, that we could really be in conflict at this juncture.
Perhaps I shouldn't vote on this.
Well, yeah, because you may want to switch.
I may very well.
That's what I was gonna say, is.
I'm suggesting maybe somebody decide, make a motion to table this till June.
Well, that's what, exactly, I was gonna say.
Or till after nine.
Till after nine.
Yeah, yes, so. Do, do we have a?
I move that we table this until we have a full board.
So time you.
I would like to do, I know that Mr. Alvis came here and he certainly falls in the category with that meter that, one of the reasons I understand, and I remember when they were doing this type of activity, they had a beautiful, I call them amens, because I knocked the hell out of them years ago. Ammon orchard that was taken care of and then all of a sudden it started getting older and dying and, and I suppose some PID guy drove by and here was, is their amon trees dying and they knew that Mr. Alvis was getting up there in years and he said, well, we're not doing it anymore, so they disconnected it, you know. Right, wrong, or different, is that right, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, see, and then Dan's never pursued it because, but if you could drive by his place, you want to see a beautiful mini farm that meets any requirement, that's the place right there, particularly in the summertime when everything is producing and it's top-of-the-line product. And the only reason there's a chain leak fence around it, I wondered about that, why in the hell did they put up that chain leak fence? Well, it's to keep the deer out of it so that they wouldn't, wouldn't bother, you know, so they do everything they can to produce a good crop and, and they do that and I compliment him, he's quite an agriculturist.
Well, okay, I, I seconded that motion that Larry made.
I can't vote.
Well, you can vote on tabling.
But is there any way that we can act on giving him agricultural rates?
Tell we can have.
The president can just table it. You don't need to vote to table it.
This is tabled until?
But you can ask.
Yeah, I was just gonna.
I am, I am going to ask Dan, so we're going to table this, yes, and then I wanted to know, how does this affect Dan? With the decision that we made, does that give him the opportunity to change to a lower rate? Or is he already on the lower rate?
I wasn't, I didn't fully understand, I thought you were going to activate your ag meter again. That was the intention, right?
Well, the meter that's sent there was, that moved in nineteen twenty-four and originally there was no meters, it just had a pipe. Two-inch pipe was a certain fee, one-inch pipe was a certain fee and so on and a drought come along and thirty-two inch payment began to resurface, so they put meters in. See, on the ten acre across the street and the twelve acres on our side of the road, but there's six acres in the orchard. You have one-inch meter there and two, two one-inch meters across the road. And they had ag rates on all of those and then, I don't know what year it was, but as you get older, you get up into the eighties and the trees were going down, I was in a honeybee's going to Nevada, North Dakota, it's the only way they talk about an ag rate. So as you got older, we decided to build a house on the corner so we could take care of it, the young died on us before we could. So we started to go in and build the house, so we kind of. house, so we kind of acre divided off the, the six acres, but we have the two acres of, of, uh, trees and garden on, on, uh, Arches, that, eleven acres.
Then it's served on a separate meter.
Yeah, a separate meter. And that meter goes through the old, old house where we lived as, as, as kids. And it's winded right now. What I wanna do is to activate that as an ag rate and run that out to portion of water and trees and the garden.
Because it's got a residence on it, though, wouldn't it have to be the residential?
But he's got a separate parcel with a separate meter going to the residence, correct?
That's what I understood.
Yeah, right? Isn't that, you said, Dan?
He's got a house on both properties, though.
He's got a house on both properties.
He's got a house on both properties.
Yeah, that.
Our house, we can modify it, but it could just run.
Yeah, it's not big enough.
Not big enough, yeah, yeah, you're right, yeah.
The other one's got a rental, so then it would be residential, uh, agr.
Wasn't the understanding staff got, they thought the eleven acres?
Was all by itself.
All by itself and no residence.
But is it?
So, so you're, you're actually golden. We'll switch, we can switch that to a residential irrigation without a problem.
Right.
And that would be, and it, and it would be equal to the ag rate?
No.
No, a little different.
The quantity charge is the same as the ag rate, but you have to purchase twenty-six units every month.
Year round.
In addition to your fee year round.
How much, how much are per unit?
It's in the thirty cents range for ag.
Thirty cents per unit?
He should still work out better than being on a pure residential.
Most of the time, yep.
Thirty cents per unit, thirty cents times twenty-six or twenty-nine or whatever you had. So.
And his rent.
You'd be doing that in the dead of the winter, too.
And his rental people use water all the time, anyway.
So it should offset, Dan, because during the winter, you're gonna spend a little more than you really should be.
From the pictures I saw, he'll, he'll be very fine moving.
Like I said, 'cause it's gonna off, it's gonna offset, correct? We're, we're gonna have, winter, you're gonna spend a little bit more, summer, you're gonna wind up spending a lot less than you have been.
He's probably pushing tier two at least, and maybe tier three in the summer.
Right.
So, yeah, it's.
And then, then if it doesn't work out that way, we can revisit it. I thought last meeting, when we had the other parts of people here, that the board was very fair in acting, and with the best interests of the district and the citizens. I really thought that, I was very pleased the way we handled that. And I'm pleased with what we're handling it today.
And Dan has a beautiful piece of property. We wanna see him, keep it that way.
It's not gonna impact him.
It won't impact him at all.
Ran it on there.
Oh, I might, I, he, all he'd have to do is come in and.
He's already done.
He's already done. Okay, he's a done deal.
I'm the one that held it off until I got this.
He was very, he was very complimentary, George. He was very complimentary on the way you were handling it.
I called, I called him right after the meeting. Told him about it.
Yeah. So we all good, Dan? That, that work for you?
Yeah.
Beautiful, beautiful. Did anybody else? We don't need any, we can't, can't comment on it anymore, till we bring, till we revisit it. So, we're gonna table item eight A for a little while.
Yes.
And we are gonna go on to item B. This is gonna be Assistant Superintendent Keith O'Brien, a summary of the final report for the leak detection project conducted February nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, through March twenty-first, two thousand thirteen. This is an information item only. Information, S.
Question, when, the last time we had this, did we get a report like this?
No.
Yes.
You know, George and I were talking about that.
I don't think we did.
Yeah, we got.
Executive summary, I think.
Yeah.
Last time.
Yeah, 'cause I was saying, boy, this is new.
I think we had other issues that we were dealing with that night, so you gave us a very short report as.
Right.
I seem to recall, you gave us a short report on it.
Keith was probably on vacation.
Yeah, he's always on vacation.
In you, in my written, in my narrative staff report, which is probably gonna be almost as easy for you to follow and understand, and I'll explain as little or as much as you, as you would like, um, this year's leak detection came up with.
Forty-three, what it was?
Uh, one more.
One more.
No, I think he goes.
No, that was it.
He was there.
I'm here.
Right there. Okay, this year, actually, with the twenty-six leaks pinpointed by, by a leak detection company, there's a little on the light side compared to the last couple of years, which is, that's just the way that it ended up coming down the pipe. Now, in the final report, they estimate how much, for one, how many gallons a minute, that they're hearing through their ground mics, that the leak is putting out, for one. And two, a pretty good estimate most of the time of what's causing it. Is it a main line? Is it a service line? Is it a hydrant? Okay? In, in the main report, in, their findings in the final report, they broke it down to just what I said, mains, service lines, hydrants. Um, they said twenty-one main line leaks out of those twenty-six that they felt. In actuality, because we've already been to them, and we know, there was fifteen main line leaks, three hydrant leaks, and those would be on the run, anywhere from the control valve at the main up to the hydrant itself. One meter leak, and that was literally a meter. It wasn't a service, it was a leak at the meter on our side of the number one control valve. One blow-off, and for those, if you don't know, blow-off, some of our, our cul-de-sac lines, dead end lines, we have what we call blow-off at the end to get rid of when we're flushing, stagnant water, airing, if we're, if we're, if we're refilling the main. One blow-off and one service line. Um, out of the leaks, they give us an estimated loss gallon per minute, and then when I, when the crews go out, I have them take their best guess, 'cause there really isn't a super accurate way to measure it, other than to look at it. And in some cases, how long do you think it would take to fill up a one gallon milk jug with what you're seeing there? I mean, that's about as scientific as it gets. They were really close. What they thought, theirs was sixty gallons a minute lost out of the leaks that they pinpointed. Because it takes a day or two or a week, the process takes a few weeks in itself, I would say it was closer to a hundred gallons a minute, but these leaks don't go away, obviously, and they keep getting worse, and they grow. There's five on here, and you've seen this before, and I put it last year, I've got five remaining leaks. Three of these five, they pinpointed and told us about last year. One is under exposed aggregate driveway approach. That's never fun. One is about seven feet deep at an intersection off pavement, but very deep. The other one is under a sidewalk right down here on Lower Clark by Dr. Jones's office. The other two were, were new, but they're estimated at no more than a half a gallon a minute. They can just barely hear them. Now, the first time I heard that, you would think, well, how could they hear that? But we've been to those when they tell us that this is the magnitude of these leaks. I don't have a doubt in my mind that there is something happening there, but it is so minute, and there's such a minor water loss at this time, and such an expense to go in looking for it, that I just put that, we're doing exactly that, we're gonna monitor it. The other three, I'm not, I can't tell you what's going on, but they have not surfaced, and they are no worse or louder now than they were last year, which I know raises some questions, but it still is not worth going in, in our opinion, to put the time and the, and the energy into. These, this, this utility services, and I'm sure they probably all do it fairly close, we've had Kelsey, Eric Kelsey was here this year, this is the third time that I know that he has been here with this service. He, as a, as a technician himself, the equipment that they use to pinpoint, and they're basically using stethoscopes that they clamp onto with earbuds, and they're electronic, battery operated, and they're listening for abnormal flows in pipes. And they use correlators, and I know you, you wanna make sure you get things done, I'll make this very quick, but I want you to understand if you don't already. They listen to a couple hydrants, five hundred feet apart, a thousand feet apart. They hear something that doesn't sound right. They will come with inside, they will go to a meter, they'll go to a blow-off, they'll go to a valve, they'll go to something, and they'll pinpoint down as close as they can. And then they punch in pipe size, pipe type, and pressure. And that equipment tells them in feet how far it is from point A, and how far it is from point B. And in this report, you'll see how they have, if you look at it through it, you'll see how they have mapped out twenty-seven feet from this, forty-two feet from that, and it is incredibly, it, it's incredible how, how close they are. Sometimes we'll go down, and it'll be a few feet either way, but when you have the washup, it doesn't, it doesn't take long to find it to that point. Um, a little light this year, for whatever reason, on the amount of leaks found, but sixty to a hundred gallons a minute. One leak, the worst leak was fifteen, was fifteen gallons a minute. Which is not. Go ahead, forward, George, unless you want.
What was the total gallons per area on those leaks?
gallons per.
Eighty-seven thousand gallons per day, I do that estimate.
If I did the math right.
Thirty-one million gallons a year.
Ninety-seven acre feet here, forty-two thousand five hundred units of water. That's equivalent to about two hundred households in Paradise, and about thirty thousand dollars worth of tier one rate water.
How much is a unit? How many gallons?
Seven hundred and forty-eight.
Seven forty-eight?
Yeah.
So a half, a half a gallon per minute is seven hundred and twenty gallons an hour.
A half a gallon a minute?
Yeah.
Can't possibly.
A half a gallon a minute is seven hundred and twen-
Half a gallon a minute.
A minute?
Thirty gallons, thirty gallons an hour.
Okay, but then, of a year, a day, a whole day, that's one unit then a day.
Thirty gallons.
Half a, half a gallon is almost one unit a day.
It's about a, it's about a unit every two days.
Well, no, a half a gallon, it's four, how many minutes in a?
Sixty in an hour.
Yeah, sixteen hour. There's fourteen forty in, in a, in a day, times half a gallon, it's seven hundred and twenty gallons a day.
Okay.
See, that, half a, half a gallon sounds very little, but it's a unit a day.
I think what Keith's telling us with those half, the offset of the loss of water is not worth the expense.
Unit that we get.
Of digging.
Seventy-two cents a month for.
It just seems like a lot of, usually the, I don't use very much water, and that, a unit a, a day seems a big waste to me.
Well, a lot of people assume we don't use much water as, but we generate, we've been, we've probably been close to ten million gallons a day already, this year.
On the holidays already this year.
Yeah. So, when you take.
Ten million gallons.
Ten thousand services and divide that into that ten million gallons, we use a lot more mo- water than we think we do per day. Heads up pretty quick.
So on a residential rate, that unit would be seven hundred and twenty gallons, and it'd be thirty cents.
Two hundred gallons per person.
Person per day.
Residential seventy-two cents.
Two hundred gallons per person per day.
Isn't that amazing?
But this leak is seven twenty per day.
Your dog's irrigation rate is thirty cents.
You said thirty cents a minute ago.
Digging down in there, that's the, the problem.
Well, you have to fix the leak, so.
Well, like you said, those, those leaks that he's talking about are just too down.
It's one of those things where, as an engineer, CPVC is a great thing, but the great thing about steel is when it starts leaking, it takes a long time for a small leak to turn into a big leak.
Big leak, yeah.
On a decent pipe. If you have PVC.
Immediately.
It goes fast.
I'm sure at some point, when these leaks become a problem, then.
Along with the road.
Manpower and dollars.
About Clear Lake, where they're taking houses.
Yeah.
And then that water's gone.
Keith, uh.
Yes.
If you don't know, I understand completely, but you, you said you had one at seven feet deep under the road somewhere?
Yes.
Round ball figure, what would it cost to take your crew and go fix that? Figure it out, you might not find it for a little ways. You may dig up half the world.
You're talking three grand, three to five grand at least.
How much?
Three to five thousand dollars at least, 'cause you gotta do shoring.
Three to five.
You've got a confined space entry, you gotta check the air. You get a little five feet, it gets to be quite.
Oh, I know, it is expensive.
Yeah. And we weathered down already, 'cause there's a valve cluster there, Doug.
Yeah.
And, and regardless of the valve size, it's easier to deal with, of course, on smaller valves. The first thing is you're hoping that it's packing that auto, auto control valve, because that would make sense with that kind of loss.
Yeah, yeah.
Like I said, it's not, in, in that particular place, yeah, it's a lot of money, it's dangerous. We can do it. We have, we, we, we have what it takes to get that done.
I understand.
But with that kind of loss, and where some of these are, yeah, it's just, it just, it just doesn't seem cost effective.
How did it get that deep?
That's good plan, good thinking.
It's attached to one of our steep banks at the end of Sterns at DeMille, and it's heading to one of our cross country mains.
And, and so you, you put it under there that deep to begin with, huh?
And that's, that's why there is the cut, yeah, that one there. But, most of those are cross country mains, a lot of those are at a minimum of five feet deep.
A little bit five feet.
So they're deep right out of the gate. Yeah. So when I said seven, to the bottom of the pipe, if you needed to get all the way around it, depending on what your problem was, yeah, you're looking at seven feet.
What size of pipe for just?
That one there, uh, tw- twenty?
Sixteen at least.
Yeah, it might be a.
Sixteen?
Across.
Sixteen inches.
You gotta dig, you gotta get it.
It's ancient, it's sixteen.
I'd have to dig a big hole, I mean, a big hole to get down, yeah. Don't plan on doing that. I'll go thirsty first, but anyway.
Yeah.
Big cost.
So, use, and I wanna thank you again, and I know I did once already, for allowing utility services to come back in. We've had a great track record with them. Matter of fact, Eric Kelsey, the technician, I don't know if it's gonna happen or not, but he's really thinking about venturing out on his own, because he's getting some experience now, and I guess he has that, you know, available to him possibly down the road. A lot of it is their experience. It's his experience with estimating the GPM. Um, but those, some of these people, boy, they ju- they have a knack for what we do. Johnny Levani are, are, worked here for just about as long as I have, in our meter department. Uh, he goes with the taxi each year. He knows this district, he knows where these mains are, he knows where the contact points are. For these people to get their equipment hooked up, it just saves a lot of, a lot of time. With the two of them assisting each other, it works really well. It's very accurate, very accurate. Um, they're more than willing to come back if they have a dry hole, if there was, if we went down and had a problem. Uh, there are absolutely no issues with that. They're very reliable, they're great to work with, and they're good technicians, and it really, I think it benefits us very well. Especially on the years where we're, there's more out there than we know of, because we know that they're accurate.
I went to one of the conference seminars I went to, there's equipment we can get. There's equipment we can get that, that works with our automated metering system. Not only is it a manpower effort that we would have to instill if we did that, 'cause we couldn't afford enough without moving them around, having that knack, expertise, whatever, it's.
Training.
I can put a window inset, but I'm sure you guys can do a lot better. I can buy the equipment to do it, so.
Exactly.
You do it day in and day, that's one of those things you kinda gotta do all the time to really do it well.
Absolutely.
Yeah. They do a great job for us, and, uh, they're just super accurate, so it, it, it makes everybody's job easier. The communication with them is incredible, it's awesome. His, from the prompt boss down to the technicians, it's very easy to deal with, and it makes my job, our jobs, everybody's a lot easier when you have that kind of communication.
Remind me what we found last year, how many?
Uh, forty-two, I believe.
Yeah.
Well, I think it was fifty-five or fifty-six total, two main line leaks, I believe. On the staff report, I, in the, in the leaked data chart, in the test one, yeah, I put in for the last couple, George had me do it, the last two years, now this is the third, just to show what we've, what we've done. But that's just main line.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not services, blow-offs, and things of that nature. So, so again, it was a little light this year, as far as amount, but I, I don't believe it's.
But they're not the same, they're not the same leaks, though, either. Except for the five, three or five that we know of.
Along with the steel mains, so they're going through the same areas going up. I've heard that before.
Yeah.
But no, not. They're certainly in some sections, but we keep data of that.
Sure.
All told, so we know what's given us the most problems with areas.
Yeah. Well, I definitely think this is something that is benefiting us.
Does this help us in finding where we, when we start replacing mains again, 'cause we haven't done anything? Does this help?
Absolutely. Because, because our surface leaks that, that we've. Because, because our surface leaks that, that we, we find, people call in that we repair year, year round. And these, here generally are not surface leaks, that's why we have this, this contract to come out, because these are leaks that we're trying to catch before they, before they surface, we want to just get them done. That data still, I keep it, we keep it separated, so we know what was done through leak detection and what was done on surface leaks, but all of the leaks are still tallied on, on the same data to where you know, oh, we were out in DeMille nine times last year, or we were here fifteen times. So absolutely, it all falls into place to see which areas are giving us the most grief, and which ones we need to bump up on a priority list, amazing. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any questions from the public for Keith?
What do you find with leaks in mainlines before they surface? How do you know they're leaking?
That we don't, that's exactly why we use this, this company, to the leak detection survey that we have done.
How are they finding them?
They're finding, they're finding them with, it's basically, man, it is, it is a super high-powered stethoscope, and it's, on one hand, it's almost that sound.
Okay, they're, they're listening for leaks.
They're lis, they're listening for it. Like you hear water in your home with old galvanized pipes, when somebody turns something on, you hear that water running under your phone, it's resonating.
But they got computers that know what a leak sounds like, so it, it cuts all the noise out.
Before there's one leak, I had a couple leaks on a mainline come in, it was inch and a half, I could put in an eighty-six, and it rustled through in two places, I found data come up, I figured out the back one, put the touch on fixed it, you know, and then we had a leak a year later, the meter reader told me that, that it was a small leak, I looked, looked, couldn't find it, couldn't hear nothing, and it went on for almost six or eight months, and finally surfaced from under sidewalk. I dug it out, it wasn't a big leak, but probably this, you know, half a gallon an hour, silver gallon an hour, so it was nothing, made it, made it ground, it'd be like, like a leak on a toilet.
Mm-hmm.
Small valve, yeah.
Right.
Uh, that was out, it would be, it should have been, be nuisance, like cost planning and waste water, it's hard to find.
And, and they don't go away?
Don't go away.
No, no, they don't usually fix themselves.
No, and a lot of our allies, I did it when I worked in the service department for years, you would use, we would use a meter stick or a probe, and hope, when you got to a customer's property, you would hope that their lines were galvanized, and they had the, the laterals and the standpipe, they're on EPC, and you could put, you could put that rod to your ear, and you can do it any day, and you put it on that hose bib, and you're listening for the same thing that we're talking about, and if you heard something, great, but you would go around to different locations, maybe even right at the house. And it was, it's an audio game, is what it is, and you go around and you listen to where you hear it the loudest, and that's, the leak is close to that spot, it's that simple. This idea is the same way, except they don't have that, they can't do that all the way along the line, so when they plug their information in to what that machine is, that audio sound, what it's hearing, it tells you how many feet it is away, and when you go down, it's incredible how accurate it is, and you say, yeah, there it is, yeah, about a gallon a minute, about five gallons a minute. It's, it's a pretty good process.
Learn something in a minute?
Yep.
Do our meters detect toilet leak each?
Through the meter.
Yeah, right. And so we tell people that-
Unless it's been a constant one for the past five years, and in that case, it's just a normal meter read, that's just, that's just part of your normal water use.
But it'd be use- Continuous use.
Continuous use.
Yeah.
But I mean, what is the smallest that it'll detect?
Quarter gallon a minute.
Quarter gallon a minute.
That's pretty good. Did any other board member have a question for Keith, or can we release him for the evening? Thank you so much for that report, Keith.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Can I jump back to my report?
Sure.
I forgot to tell you about Eden Rock.
Oh, yes, we-
After further review and consideration, and what their rules and regs they have to live with-
Mm-hmm.
They decided not to proceed with, um, making any changes, just because legally that puts them in a bind if they start discounting one person, it's built into their fees, it, it was just something they couldn't do. So I just want to let you know.
Okay.
That. And then the other thing is, maybe somewhere in here, I don't know if it was brought up, but we did start the phone system for, uh, customer leaks. Been going on two weeks now.
Uh, yeah. This is the automated, the automated-
Phone system.
Message?
It's in Kevin's report.
It was in a re, in the report.
Treasurer's report.
Staff report.
Staff report, I mean, yes.
Staff report.
Um, we're, I'm hearing positive feedback up at the counter, takes, they're calling a couple hundred a day, and, uh, staff probably deals with it till about eleven in the morning, they're fielding different calls, and, um, seems to be working out well.
Excellent. That was the intention, so. Okay, um, thank you again, Keith, and thank you for updating us on Eden Rock there. Um, item eight C, PID Water Conservation Committee, Consider Letters of Interest Received to Participate on the Water Conservation Committee, and I think we had two letters, um, if I'm not mistaken. Michael, I guess you would say it's Spice?
Spease.
Spease, okay, do you know him?
Yes.
You do? Okay. Um, sounds like he's got some great qualifications. Is he in the audience this evening? I don't believe so.
One of them said they couldn't be here.
No, Michael, I kind of spread that he's not here.
Another meeting had to be. I make a motion that we approve both those men for the Water Conservation Committee.
Second?
Good.
Okay, it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero.
Now you're on the committee.
Now you're on the committee.
Now.
We're going, with the two members at large that we have, we're gonna have President Corolla, we're gonna have a great committee.
Yes, I think so.
I worked with Michael, I was very pleased when I got this, and he applied. Uh, he's a professor at Chico State that you figured out by now, and I've worked with him on several projects, it's been a joint venture between Bu College and Chico State. He's done a lot statewide, he taught at Fresno State for a while, and on and on.
So you have enough now for the committee, you don't need more?
Uh, let us meet, and then we'll see.
Yeah.
Because I don't think we're gonna have a tie vote on the face.
It's all that was interested, it's been on our website.
All right, so I mean, we- We didn't close the, we didn't close the-
No.
Availability to get on the committee.
I don't think you specified a number.
No, we didn't.
Yeah.
And you don't have to.
Yeah.
I don't think you specified, Mr.-
We'll start as-
So who's on the committee? You and what's-
Me.
No, no, no.
You two?
And Doug.
I made him chair, I'm on it.
I'm gonna ask him to chair it, and I think we'll have our first meeting, and I'll get a hold of Michael in June.
So you might have a tie vote.
First part of June.
Could have a tie vote.
But I'll talk and see when's a good time. George, you'll be attending those meetings, I'm sure.
Sure.
As you do, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll be setting it up. I'll find out for you before the night's over if you have a bad night.
I think we've got contact information from everybody, so Georgiana-
You have that information already?
You work in the schedule study?
Oh, good, okay.
And I'd like to apologize to Ward, I, in reading your letter. Yes, I did see you, and we talked, and with my schedule, it was purely, that was purely my fault down there. You weren't at the meeting, I knew you had a, um, engagement already planned, um, when we talked about this the last time, when we did the formation of the committee, but I do apologize, Ward.
Well, not unreal, as usual, Georgiana's got that information, and we'll come up with a tie that's good.
Unfortunately-
First part of June.
Standing committee, subject to the Brown Act.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes. If not June one or two, I'll be working with the Department of Homeland in annual tours.
Yeah. But yeah, what I, what you'll do is contact Georgiana, then she'll send out some dates-
I'll just work it all through Georgiana.
And we'll see who coordinates. But contact will go through Georgiana. Not a reply to all. On there. Okay, great, great, we'll work on that, and, uh, I appreciate those members of the public that, uh, signed up for that. Item D, eight D, Bu Local Agency Formation Commission Election, Consideration to Submit a District Ballot for Election of a Special District Regular Non-Enterprise Member and an Alternate Member.
Um, I'd like to make nominations on this, that Wes Gilbert for the non-enterprise and Marcia Carter for the enterprise, or non-enterprise, I don't know, the Special District Alternate Commissioner. So those, I'd like to nominate those two people on the ballot.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I, maybe I should explain, I served with Wes Gilbert, he's a certified engineer, like George, and I don't know who Marcia Carter is, but she certainly wrote a nice letter asking to be put on the board, so that's the reason behind my nomination.
Okay. Could Wes be on both of those? I saw he was in both nominations.
Hmm. No, typically.
No, you don't want an alternate to be a regular member.
Yeah, I'm just-
If he would have lost the regular-
Then he could be an alternate.
He could have been a-
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I was looking at that, and I thought, okay, how's that work? Um, all in favor for Wes Gilbert as a non-enterprise and Marcia Carter as a, a non-enterprise alternate, right? Isn't that what it is? Okay, non-enterprise alternate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, passes four zero. Okay, we're, I requested we'd be done by, um, eight forty-five, apparently we're running, we're doing good, so thank you, everybody.
Now we take a recess, take forty-five.
Do you want, yeah, I know, I know, we can go, we can almost go get dinner at that point. Um, actually, why don't we go ahead and let's move through, unless anybody really needs a recess right this minute, let's keep going, let's get the treasurer's memo and the approval of the APR checks done, and hopefully, that'll take us a little closer, then we can do maybe a little longer recess, and hopefully Ken will be here. Anybody opposed to that idea? Okay, that's what we're gonna do. So, um, item ten A, Treasurer's Memo, Review and Consideration Acceptance of a Treasurer's Memo for the period ending April thirtieth, two thousand thirteen.
We have my memo, uh, cash position is currently at five point one seven million. Um, of that, about three million is unrestricted, the other two point four, or the two point two four is the restricted portion, that includes the one point six of capacity fees that we've talked about, that are earmarked for the project that is going to be discussed after, um, all of my stuff. Um, the other portion is that reserve fund for the US Bank COP bond issuance. The highlights that we are, uh, doing right now is the major projects, the Corporation Yard obviously is in progress, we're moving along, our crews are up there, uh, working hard to get that infill in, and, um, to get some of the site work still done. Water rights application is in progress, the process water recycle project we'll hear about later on tonight, our Billy and Skyway pro, pipeline projects, I think the, the Billy is complete, at least, has that been, uh, notice the completion, been completed on that?
Billy? Yeah, that was a while ago.
So, yeah, so the Billy Road is complete, the Skyway Project, the, they're doing the services, you'll see them if you come through during the morning time, that they're out in the middle of the road. Um, we've also put in a reimbursement on the Billy Road for our grant reimbursement, and we haven't received any money yet, but we have put in for reimbursement on that, and our final reimbursement will be coming up in the next quarter for that, so we'll be looking for, um, not only, well, we don't have any more funds available other than the retainer, so we'll be asking for the retainer on that, uh, portion of the Billy Road grant funds. The accounting software, that is rocking and rolling right now. Um, we, this, today actually is our last day that we will be live on the old accounting software for the gen, for the, the general ledger, accounts payable, and payroll. And so right now, as we speak, they're transferring all that data from our old system into the new system, and then on Monday of next week, we'll have trainers in-house training everybody on the new system. So, last week we went through online or, or over-the-phone training with them, working through the new system and how it's gonna work, and then next week we'll be completely live on the new system. The utility billing won't be, that's the only one that'll be outstanding, sitting on a-
You said accounts payable, right? Accounts payable is what we're-
Accounts payable will be, um-
Just not accounts receivable?
Right. Yes. That will be, that will be transitioned in July, so we'll have basically a month of kind of working two systems when it comes to that. Um, but the system looks like it's gonna work really well for us, there'll be a lot of efficiencies that we'll gain through it, a lot of electronic notifications, um, right now the treatment plant is on their own little hybrid system up there for purchases and, and approvals, they'll be completely on our, our system, so all of the information that they want to see will be readily available to them, and so next, the next three weeks is, they're gonna be on site, and the office staff will be doing double duty, basically, training and doing their normal work, so it'll be, it'll be quite a, quite a thing, but I think it'll all go real smoothly, and everybody in the office is real, uh, on board and excited about the transition, so, um, that's really been taking a lot of our time and, and effort in, internally, but I think it's well worth the effort, so. The, and then we have the A-Tank, and you've kind of seen that, some of the change orders and different things like that, that's also in progress. So, we also are working currently with, uh, the outsourced billing company, we had a kickoff meeting with them, I was extremely impressed with their system, and how, uh, ease, ease of use it is, how that we can customize any message we want on there, if there's a blank spot on the bill, we can put whatever we want on there, we can put logos, we can put, uh, graphics, um, there, if, if there's a customer that either is paying electronically or has a zero bill that does not need to send a re, a payment in, they'll automatically not send them a pay, return receipts, or a return envelope in their payment, which saves us money, because we're just getting charged by the pieces that they send out. Um, if there's a customer that has multiple bills, they'll, they'll consolidate them all on their side, we're not telling them that, they're just, they have a system that will know that this person has multiple bills, consolidate it all into one envelope and send that one envelope out, so it sends, saves us not only on the pieces of mail that we're sending out, but also the postage, which is the biggest thing. So, they, they're real easy to work with, they've worked with our new software company in the past, and they're working with them in the future, or going into the future, so we, we've, we've been nothing but impressed with, with their system. They, they locked in their price that you saw for five years, there was no issue with that, and I think that they'll be a really good one to work with going into the future, so.
Is the envelope gonna say anything about this is not junk mail?
Or, no, the envelope will just be a standard envelope, but it will have, you know, the window and the, our return address will be in the top corner, so.
We'll see with it.
I have a feeling that more, more customers will feel like this is not junk mail than a postcard that they get in the mail that is not junk mail, so.
Well, I know, with these computer-generated checks that people do, at first, they weren't putting anything on the envelope, and a lot of people thought they were junk mail and were throwing them away. Now, they put on there, their, their, a check is enclosed or something on the envelope, so you don't throw it away.
Right now, we don't have a contract with them to put anything on the envelope other than our return address, and, and we'll see how things go. We're also, they're also working closely with our lockbox. The lockbox was extremely happy with that we're moving away from the postcards because they have to hand input everything that goes through that box. This way, there'll be a little micker on the bottom and they'll be able to run it through a machine. That machine will pick up all the information and it will save them buku amount of time.
Are we gonna get a discount?
You can talk to them. So, they'll, they'll be very, very excited about that, so. We also have, we just had a, a meeting with them about change, they're changing of the bank, they're changing over their online banking, and so, it's much improved, so much improved the district's online banking access, and it also much improved how we process payments electronically. So, currently, we accept checks online. Currently, you put all your information in there, then we go and print a check and that check then is run through a system. Now, we'll be able to take that information that you input online, we'll be, basically be able to take that format and upload it into the system automatically and we'll get credit for it that day. It's, it's a much more efficient system and a much more, a system that'll work, and that's no, no additional cost to the district, so. It's, things, things are moving very, very nicely. We also are going to be working with a new credit card company with the new software changeover. That credit card company, there'll be no change to how we charge, we'll still, there'll still be a zero-sum game to the district, but it'll work very closely with our software system, so it'll be automatic update, so when that person signs that card, that system takes it, credits that card, if it's approved, it automatically credits their account inside their system, and then everything is real-time is what it does, so. It makes things a lot more efficient on our side, too, so we're not having to double-process that payment, so.
It'll work good.
And then, like George said, our outbound calling is up and running and notifying customers of leaks, it seems like it's working very well. We've had good feedback from everybody, and I think that there'll be a, an efficiency savings, but also, there is a cost savings from not having to process those letters and mail them out and all that good stuff, so. Other than that, I'll take any questions that you have at this point.
I make a motion that we accept his report and thank him for his service.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. And I'd like to say there's nothing more exciting to me than our CFO when he's excited about numbers and computers. That makes me happy.
One thing on the outbound calling for the leak notification is it is nice, from my observation, that the customer service gets to actually deal with people that are appreciative of a, of a service we provide. They, they tend to deal with all the unhappy people all the time, so it's probably a nice positive for them to talk to people that are appreciative of.
Thanking them for making that call.
Helping them save water and money.
Yeah, one, one last thing, too, is today and tomorrow, we are doing our water, water education for the schools.
Project Wet.
Project Wet, and Keith, which Keith has left, is a big part of that, and I know Bill Taylor is a big part of that, and I think that that will be something that the Conservation Committee should be, should not, not just look at, but also be proud of.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, that, that, what we're doing. And Christie Park, who the new office manager is, jumped feet-first in, she went to training over the weekend.
All right.
To, to learn about what, what it's doing. The trainer that taught them says that Cal-Waterdown in Chico doesn't do this at all, so this is something that we're, we're kind of not, not unique, but we're, we're doing other than, you know, we're stepping out.
Unique in the North State.
Yeah, exactly. And she said the kids had a blast, that there had older students come up why they were doing this and said how much that this field trip was one of the field trips they had the most fun on during their time in fourth grade, so she said it was just a great, great joy and that there was a lot of education that, and a lot of good PR for PID doing that, so I just wanna give, recognize that.
When did it take place this year?
It happened today.
Oh, today.
And tomorrow.
Oh, well, great.
You're ponderosa one day in elementary, is that?
It was paradise this morning before.
Ponderosa, yeah.
Basically, we try to get all the fourth grade students in paradise.
It might rain tomorrow, but they got today, it must've been a fun day today.
It'll be the wet, wet project.
That's right, so.
But I think we always appreciate the pictures, these guys do a, a great thing out there. You will not see one kid in those pictures that isn't having a great time. They're making, they're making mud, they're squirting water, they're having, they're having fun, so.
Definitely.
It is a great.
And it's okay for them to do that.
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah. We won't find them just yet, right? But I'd just like to thank all the staff for taking care of it. Yeah, exactly, yeah, right, your watering's done. Thank you, Bill, for pointing that out, they're off the hook. So, but I'd like to thank you, I think the whole board would like to thank you for doing that, that was a great, great thing you guys do. So, we'll move on, thank you, Kevin.
Yep.
For that, we will move on to item ten B now, approval of the April checks. I know we're probably gonna, Ken might've had one or two on there. It wasn't really an extensive, I didn't see a whole lot on there, you caught the one thing already, you commented on the one thing that I saw, the security fence, so. We will start with Director Flesher today.
I was just wondering, it's quite an acronym, but for the seventy thousand dollar one, it's check number four, four, five, four, four.
You got a check number, an iPad page number?
Oh, well, one thirty-five. iPad page one thirty.
Aqua J P I A.
Oh, the Aqua, okay, yep, yep. That's, that is our medical insurance.
Okay, I figured that's what it was.
So, medical, dental, vision, life, EAP.
Is that approximate monthly cost?
Yep. I think normally it's sixty-nine, so I don't know, just happened to go over.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Page one thirty-three, monthly expenditure comparison. You have the bar charts and the bottom one says two thousand eleven thirteen.
Okay, I'll change that, I apologize.
You wanna read the twelve thirteen?
Twelve thirteen.
Prefer that to read the twelve thirteen?
You know, we always have to find something wrong.
It's on the side there.
That's all he's done is one, or they've done is one type of. I was sort of curious, I, I see you got red line or yellow marking us on the top of it, but the next one was payroll on one thirty-four, and.
Yeah.
I just was curious, we've been staying with la, we've been, we're ahead of last year by these bars, I don't know what the totals are, but.
A lot of this is a sale of vacation and sick leave by retirees. They're allowed to basically kind of extend out their sales, once they had their retirement letter in, they were gonna get paid out this amount anyway.
That's why we had the spike in December, January.
Right, so what they've done is they've kind of sold it.
Once they sign off and committed to their retirement, then they could plan out that sell-off rather than waiting until the last day and selling it all off.
I saw John at T-ball the other night and he told me about his trip to the desert, and it was like playing water all the time, and then the first thing he'd do is head out into the middle of the desert, right? So, it sounded like a great trip that he had out there, though.
So, that's, that's that thing, is that it's just a sell-off of vacation and sick from the retirees.
I, I thought it might be, but I thought I'd better ask, make sure I was aware of it. As far as the check register, I'll, I'll let Larry.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's all you have, Phil?
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, wait, no, that's.
Larry, what do you have, sir?
Okay, iPad one forty-three, well, that was it, he gave us the backup on that, that was the attorney, so I looked at that. Okay, on one forty-four.
What was on one thirty-three, I'm sorry?
The lawyer.
The lawyer, okay.
Yeah, the lawyer. We got the backup for it.
What time for you? The paper isn't quite thick enough for ten thousand dollars, I don't know.
Okay, on page one forty-four, national meters and automation. Are the, my question is, is because we have the automated meters now, do they cost the customer more because they got the, then they're paying for this?
Yeah, we included the firefly cost on, inside that, yeah.
I don't, I didn't remember us talking about that, I just want.
This was an order in for stock because if you remember, we had a discussion about capacity fees and that our capacity fees were based on true three-quarter. So, some people could use a true three-quarter inch meter to handle their new fire sprinkler requirements. But it has to be a brass three-quarter inch, it's more expensive and they pay for it, but we ordered some, so we have some on the shelf.
But that eliminates the need for the secondary.
It just reminded me of, of what, to ask the question if, are we charging for the firefly? How much more is that?
About a hundred and a quarter.
More? So, that means all the people, existing people got it for free, huh? Well, they're paying for it. They're paying for it, but they didn't have to cough.
Paid for it through the rates.
Through the rates, but they didn't have to come up with the, the dollars. Okay, then the next one was northern cow fence, the damage, which we've talked, already talked about. Okay, and then on page one forty-seven, Robertson Erickson Civil Engineer, reef, what, it's on the yard job, what is, what are they doing?
Robertson and Erickson is our lead for our stormwater pollution prevention plan.
Oh.
Remember that we had to have a plan in place for monitoring the runoff? We chose Russ, Russ Erickson because he was most friendly with training our staff, so all he's been doing is occasionally reviewing reports and, and doing some filing, very little field meeting.
Haven't really had any rain events, you know, so.
We may have another bill from them because the state was reviewing our submittals and thought we weren't doing it correctly, so they contacted us, and Russ was able to talk to them. We weren't monitoring for PH because we didn't, and under his interpretation of the rules, you didn't have to monitor for PH unless you had cement activities going on in that period, and we weren't. But they, it was a disagreement interpretation, so we're, we're monitoring for PH now, no fine, no harm, no fine.
What are you monitoring?
Whenever we have a storm event and the water is running off.
Cause there's no wa.
That's what we measure.
Isn't it dry now?
Still, but if it rains, we could have some runoff.
Yeah, right, okay, but it.
We don't have much now because the, until we have paving, that's really all that's gonna drive in there at our position right now.
Right, okay. What does R E A P stand for?
Oh, here's a quiz show one, right?
Got me on that.
I, I hadn't seen it before.
Monitoring is what that basically means. That's the monitoring on the.
Program, I bet the P's for program.
Okay, page number one forty-nine, Tri-County's Bank Card. What is the hosting and a domain name?
That's our website, so hosting is what, basically on the outside, they host the website, so we're not hosting it inside, so when people go out, you make changes, it's all done outside of the district on their servers, and then you have to pay for a domain name. So, what we did was for this, the wall, water quality report, we created a new no, domain name, so people could go to a separate website just to view that, so that we could.
The PID CCR dot com.
Yes.
They have to go with one click.
Okay, and is this a one-time charge?
This is a, we, I think this is three years.
Oh, three years, okay.
Three years of service.
Okay.
I was gonna say, that'd be nice if it's a one-time charge, but I doubt it.
Yeah.
You have to continue to monitor that.
Right, okay. Page one fifty, utility service associates, waterline survey and pinpointing project.
Leak detection.
Oh, that's the leak, okay. It didn't say leak or anything, so I didn't, wasn't sure what it was, okay.
Excuse me.
Is that it, Larry?
That's it.
I'm sorry, I missed you say that. And Larry caught the one that was a real good pick at the top of the page over the fence there with the meters, cause I did not realize we were charging the customer, so that was a good pick on that one, so. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the check registers as April check register as stated in the agenda.
I'll second that. All in, do we need to say and authorize a similar for next one?
It's part of the, stated in the agenda.
Okay, okay. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. Can we do the number twelve? Cause we're gonna go into closed session on that anyway at the end, so can.
Twelve is just announcing it.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's, yeah, you can ask the public right now if they want to comment on it, that's all that twelve is for.
Okay, so, do you want to, we'll go on to item twelve, do you want to, cause we're gonna hold on, Lee and Roe on there, and director's comments, we could do, but we can hold off on that also. So, number twelve, do you wanna give us a little, or give the public a little? I don't know, what can we give them on that?
Just read what.
Basically what's written there.
Just read what.
Hey, does anybody have any comments on item number twelve?
It's a consideration to sell the excess property out here.
Yes. Is there any comments from the public on that, regarding that? Lauren?
Clarification, it's the old floor shop, right?
Yeah, and the, and the rental house also, potentially.
Okay.
Yes.
Potentially.
The, gee, that was not, that's, that property, we have access because we bought this building. Our original plans were to build the administrative building on that property, so then when we got this at a good price, that made that property available to sell to somebody else. So, that was a good, that was good for us.
So, the city has negotiation between a potential buyer and the ID.
Yes.
So, without any real estate fee, no commission to a real estate agent?
Uh, that's not yet decided, that's up to the board's discretion.
Well, just a way to save money if you do it.
Well, it's questionable whether it saves money.
Yeah, we still have to invest time.
Cause if we do it ourselves, it's a lot more attorney fees than if we have a Realtor that helps prep everything and he just has to do a quick review, so it can quickly be a wash or not save money.
Well, we'll discuss those items in closed session and then advise the public of what we decided at that point. So, eight fifteen, I'm hoping Ken's running a little ahead of schedule.
Director comments.
Let's go ahead and do director comments, let's do number eleven.
Ken has none, I can tell you.
Ken has none. He's not gonna tell us about the ballet?
I'll start with Larry, director's comments.
Okay, I, I just wanna comment, I went to the notorious town council meeting last night, they mysteriously, I don't know if you guys even heard about it, but they were talking about a business license again. And I've always been against a business license because I think it's nothing but a, a way of controlling people and raising revenue, and to me, it's a tax, I don't care what they say. They didn't even call it a license, they called it a registration. The post called it.
Registration fee or something, yeah.
Yeah, right. They, and they, they started, and all during the meeting, they kept away from the word license completely and everything, and it was so funny, and luckily, a couple of the council members agreed and said that this is nothing but a revenue-producing ploy, you know, even though they got up there and had, they had people say, well, this is the way you save lives because if you know who has the bad chemicals, if you know who has the bad chemicals, then your fireman won't get blown up if there's a fire there and all that. And the thing that got me was, what, there's probably individuals that have more dangerous things than businesses, you know, I mean, what if you have a?
Well, license you too, Larry.
Right, I did, that's what, that's the next step, that's the next step, what do you do, you know, I mean, it's getting ridiculous, and what, and it was gonna.
We have one with the county anyhow.
Yeah, I, I have four.
With ours out here.
I have four licenses already with the state, with the government.
Yeah, but even in the building, you have to hazard.
But anyway. And then they were gonna do, it was, and the thing that was funny was, they had the master fee thing and they had it on there already, and that was the first item that they were gonna, that was the hearing. So, luckily, the council members realized it and decided not to vote on it until after they, it was discussed. But I figured it out, at fifty-four dollars a person, if we've got twenty-five hundred businesses in town, which we very could easily be, that's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year. If the, and that, it's gonna cost that much to register these people?
It's not.
It's ridiculous. And as I remember, when they first started talking about it, it was gonna be like eight dollars, this was thirty years ago, it was gonna be eight dollars, but the problem is that business licenses in San Francisco are in the thousands of dollars. I had a client that had to pay twenty-five thousand dollars to register a LEMO in San Francisco, so he could do a LEMO business. Of course, he makes, he made a lot of money, but I mean, but that's, they get the foot in the door and they do it, I just.
It's wild to offset twenty-five thousand, though.
Huh?
Take a while to offset twenty-five thousand.
Well, he, they have businesses that pay that much, but, in San Francisco, but the thing is, is you get the door in, and also, too, it starts regulations, you know, and like you said, you license, well, pretty soon, you're gonna have to license your guns, you're gonna have to license your bullets, and where do you stop? So, I'm completely against it.
We're less than fifty in Chico, we pay one in Chico for our business.
Fifty dollars?
Yes, we're less than fifty dollars.
But do you get anything for it?
Couldn't be a discussion.
About it, it's a good comment.
Yeah.
I, I agree with you, Larry, but.
Yeah, well, that's just, and I, and so I just, I, I don't know, it just upsets me when I go to town council meetings, so I just wanted to comment on it.
Bill, do you have any comments?
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have two, two. About a month ago, I had a heifer get, jump a fence and running around and she broke a standpipe, so. So, here I was with, on a two-inch standpipe and water going about four feet in the air, and I, and the place that was at was Rayleigh and Warren's house, and I thought, well, jeez, the meter ought to be right here, or it must be over here. Nobody knew where the meter was, and the people that lived in the house weren't there. So, I called PID, the lines, and out came Rick Steyer. And he helped me find the meter, he got out all the maps and everything, and it turned out the meter was right off the main line, which was in one place you'd never expected on this particular piece of property. And we got the meter turned off, and the folks came home, we patched the pipe. But I wanted to praise, uh, Rick Steyer for his good service on the weekends, and make a note of it in the minutes. Then yesterday, after I left your meeting, or you would've heard about this earlier, George, I went to a business in paradise, and the lady there, I won't mention any names, informed me that on Sunday, she saw PID truck, license number one-two-two-eight-two-nine-five, pulling out of Preston Avenue on April the twenty-eighth, and I think it's a Sunday, going, heading to Chico. And she, and it had a rack on it. And she said, well, do you know why somebody would be going to Chico on the weekends? I said, no, I just know there's, out for emergency services. So, who knows? Any rate, um-
Princeton Avenue? That may be it.
Huh?
Preston Avenue?
It may be Preston Avenue. It's below Neo off Skyway. Princeton.
Princeton, so they would know they were going to Chico.
Yeah, so they're going down Skyway to Chico. So, any rate, I told her I would make a note of it at the meeting. So, George, there you are.
Sure he had a reason to be doing it on there. Director Flesher, comments?
I, uh, had someone discussing that they thought the, our crews working on the Sky, Skyway, were doing a very good job. And it was a compliment, and I kind of carried that to the board's meeting since I've been on. I don't know why they find me to tell me that stuff. Only had one that I remember that was kind of a negative type thing, but, that, it's there, and they always wonder why there's three or four people standing out there, but they don't really understand traffic control and a whole bunch of that type of stuff, you know? So, they were complimentary on how they're working on that, trying to get ahead of the repaving. So, they were complimentary on that.
The micro, I was gonna say, I was gonna, the micro overlay.
The micro overlay. We, and I think what we need to do, when they do that micro overlay, we need to make very sure, I was gonna say damn sure, that they know it's not us, you know? You see, I'm the guy that preaches laser, if you want to patch a road, and I've been driving around on these roads, but maybe we'd want them that smooth, because, you know, they become speedways, and Billy's a shining, I went down Billy Road, just with that in mind, you know? And the only thing that's smooth on Billy Road right now is where Vizinoni or whoever did that ditch, that's the only flat spot. The rest of it, you know, I lived off that road, has got-
Pre-routes.
A hundred years of pre-routes and patches.
Wow.
But maybe that's good, because people have to drive slow. That's all I have.
Thank you, Director.
At least this part of it, we'll see what later happens.
Exactly. My comments are, I'd like to thank, um, all the members of staff and, um, the public that worked on Kids Fishing Day. I, uh, packed everything up Friday night, I was all ready to go. I woke up Saturday morning, sick as a dog, and, uh, my allergies had finally got ahold of me, my head was just pounding. So, seeing as how I would just have to wake people up to get up there, six o'clock in the morning, I just sat up and sat in my own little wooziness in the living room by myself, so, and watched some news. So, but I'd still like to thank, the pictures were great that we saw from Kids Fishing Day. Um, that is a great thing. Once again, thank you to everybody that participated in that, because they are, uh, they're putting out their own time for that. Um, they do not get paid during that, and, uh, so I, I really appreciate everything they do.
Correct that, because we don't want to get crossfired with payrolls, they get compensated time off.
Compensated time off, okay. Okay, comp time, okay, so-
They do get CTO.
They don't ask for it, but we make them just so we don't get in trouble.
Good, yeah, okay, so, yes, I appreciate you clarifying that for me. Um, but these guys do above and beyond on their, looks like it was a pretty good turnout? Do we know what we had for turnout?
Four to five hundred kids.
Four to five hundred?
Yeah.
Nice. Yes, I'm sorry.
Since you reminded me, can I have a comment too?
Sure.
Another positive thing, I attended the fishing day, and it was the first time since my kids were little, small like that. And it was a delightful time, but I had a horrible morning. Part of it was her fault. I started out the day with a great big greasy doughnut that I love, you know?
It's hard to talk now.
Oh, you know, you tried to talk, but-
Waiting to see how this becomes Georgiana's fault.
I had to have two of them, you know, and they were fifty cents each. And I washed those down with three beautiful cups of Dutch Brothers free coffee. And then I had two hot dogs, went over to his dad's side of the lake, and had another hot dog, and a big bowl of excellent stew, and I washed that down with a Diet Pop, and that was all before eleven o'clock in the morning, and I felt fantastic.
Exactly.
It was all fifty cents.
That, the, uh, the food prices up there, I don't think you can go to another venue and find food prices like theirs.
I have one comment, because I was with Doug.
Yeah, he was with me.
Yeah, Doug got to sit down in your dad's food booth, food booth, and visit with the other folks as they came in. Well, I sat there and had a long conversation with your dad, so I know all sorts of things that I, about you that-
Director Corolla's-
We're doing that.
Director's Coro- Corolla's youth.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
We might want to think, if we can think about doing it, if the volunteers are up there, this is from your dad's, this is from your dad, is that we come up with a vest or a hat or something that kind of depicts them as volunteer, if we could come up with something like that, maybe, you know? Of course, it would've been a day for a, a, uh, a mash line one, you know, who knew next week, because it was just a beautiful day. And I watched one of the young ladies while I was eating my second doughnut that I was telling you about, they came up and Greg weighed a, uh, I think it was six-point-four pound fish or something, oh god, it was a big fish, you know? And, uh, but it was just a great day. That's a super thing that we do for the community, it really is.
I, I have one more comment, which I just remembered. At the break of the town council-
You better go through the list again, shouldn't I?
At the break of the town council meeting, a former PID director wanted to know what is happening to the three million, three hundred thousand dollars that's been collected on the hydrant, the fire hydrant fund. He wants to know what, where, where it went. We should, we should have three million dollars in our reserve account, because that's how much we've collected in-
It's not our money.
Twenty-two years.
Anytime you asked about that, you should say, that's not our money, that's the town's money.
Well, I told him that it's, there's a, we have a special account for it, and every penny's accounted for, but he want, is there, is it much work to?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Would it be, I mean, it's not somewhere where you just push a button and it would print out? Okay, but there, but we've been, I told him, well, we've been spending it on fixing hydrants, putting in new hydrants as needed, and, and putting in ma- uh, main lines that wouldn't, uh, wouldn't be able to facilitate fire hydrants. Isn't that correct?
And that's a fifty-fifty share on those. You can tell, PID pays half, the town pays half.
Right, but, uh, he, he says that we should have three million dollars in our reserve because of that. Because twenty-two years of that, twenty, yeah, I told him, I, I said, I think we have less than two hundred thousand in there now.
Well, you can tell them to look at our budget.
It's in there, yeah, okay.
Just say, I didn't ever remember the C in the number that high, so-
No, it's, we've been-
He must've been a director a while back.
But it, but we have collected three million dollars from that thing. I will-
Well, over time.
I was the mayor when that law, when we put that into effect.
Yeah.
Thirty-
Twenty.
Twenty-two years. Nineteen ninety-one, yeah.
I'd like to thank all the directors for their comments. Is there any reason we can't do the closed session? Of course, did Ken express that he wants to be part of that? We have enough for a quorum on there.
You're the president.
Well, why don't we go ahead?
You go right ahead.
Well, here's what I'm thinking, is why, if we can go get that knocked out, then I don't think Ken, he can't-
I need a break.
We can take, do you want to take a five-minute recess?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess.
We'll take a five-minute recess till, uh, six-minute recess, till eight-thirty-five.
Okay.
All right. We'll reconvene this meeting at eight-thirty-eight, and go back into, I think what I'm gonna do is we're gonna go into closed session, uh, real property negotiations with George, and we will adjourn into the conference room, and then we'll let you know what we decided from there. How long do you audition? I don't think this is going to take too long, so-
Ten fifteen minutes.
Yep, so, if-
Hopefully Ken will be-
We're gonna reconvene after closed session. Are you ready, Georgiana?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And direction was given to the, um, district negotiator in regards to the closed session item.
Did you reopen the meeting with just two of you? You don't have a call right now.
They're right there.
Now I can call for a re, now can I call for a recess?
Yeah, you can give them a few, I, I have, he said he was gonna text me, maybe he forgot.
Um, let's go for a ten-minute recess, or until Director Hunt gets here.
So, nine, our Ken period, we start.
Exactly. Come out of recess, and we are gonna let Roger get going with his, um, presentation of the Process Water Recycle Project. And this is just an information item only, this is so Roger can give us some information, we can ask some questions. This is not an opinion time, this is not a decision time, so I'd like to keep it to just questions on, and clarifications on things that he is bringing forward to us tonight.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you for the opportunity to come here and update you here on the project. Uh, the presentation that I put together, uh, I'll try and keep it fairly brief, but, uh, obviously feel free to ask questions along the way. It's meant to sort of dovetail with memo that we had prepared, I don't know if that was-
It's in the packet.
In the packet, okay. So, a lot of the information here is meant to, uh, go along with that. And again, just a recap of what this project is about, um, it's to change, convert the process from, uh, discharging the process, uh, wash water that's generated through the, the primary treatment process, instead of discharging that to, uh, the environment to the reservoir, is the process will be now to modify that and recover and recycle that and return that water to the head of the plant. And so, um, one of the, a couple of the drivers, or in terms of goals, uh, that we look at for a process like that, is be able to optimize that, uh, treatment process. And, uh, when we're reintroducing that water, and that's, uh, you know, Department of Public Health, which, you know, regulates that, they have established certain goals that they are looking for, for that. Uh, one of those being the clarity of the water, the two N T U, so that establishes a level of treatment and clarity, uh, for returning the water. And then the ten percent return, uh, recycle rate, so that's to say that you're not returning all of this water all at once and overwhelming the treatment process, and so they put limits on that, and that's also from a public health standpoint. The, the ten percent number is, uh, usually enforced, uh, much more closely here by Department of Public Health, and so we'll talk about that in terms of, you know, some of the, how that, uh, can impact and might impact the plant here. Um, and again, it's, it, this, this project here is to get away from, uh, maintaining the NPDS permit that, uh, the district currently has for, um, discharging that. And along the lines here, the last point about improving solids de-watering, I mean, a lot of what we're talking about here is optimizing not only the treatment of the returned water, but also the, the solids that are part, also generated as part of the treatment process, and coming up with a more efficient way to de-water that, ultimately haul that off-site. And so, just a little bit of background and reminder here of, of kind of where we started with the whole project. Our scope was, we started off the project by doing an initial screening of several treatment approaches and treatment technologies. And those three were, uh, the first one, the Destin's Quick Drive, that was a, uh, sort of a proprietary system, uh, primarily a sand filter bed, it's kind of a, it, it's one of a kind, you, you can, I mean, we'll just leave it at that, it's, it's basically a proprietary system. Uh, we looked at that both with and without thickening, and the, the purpose of the thickening, and the, the picture below is a picture of a, sort of a typical, uh, what they call an inclined plate settler, where you would first take your wash water, which is mostly water, it's got solids in it from the, the treatment process, when you backflush the, the main treatment equipment, it's got solids, and the purpose of the thickening then is to separate a lot of the water from the solids. Uh, you don't separate it all, but you take it from, you know, a fraction of a percent solids to maybe one percent or so, which, which makes a big difference in terms of cutting down the volume. And then from there, that water would be, or, the, the main water would be clear enough and treated enough to be able to return that to the head of the plant. The solids would be, uh, sent to drying ponds and allowed to further dry there, and sort of help speed the process along. And then the third was looking at the, what we call the line base, of essentially taking the pond areas that you have right now, and excavating them out, making them deeper, putting in a liner, uh, to comply with, uh, also with state requirements there for, uh, for handling that.
That's kind of like the pictures, where, that top picture.
And that would be the top picture right there.
Where was that, Placer or something, where was that?
Uh, the upper one is, um, uh, Grass Valley.
Grass Valley, okay, I remember, we'd seen that earlier.
Right, for the Nevada Irrigation District. And so, yeah, so that's, that's the typical liner, uh, with an underdrain collection system, and then on top of that, you would put a sand media, and then the solids would be deposited on top of that. Uh, so, those are the three options. When we did the initial screening, we looked at the thickening, we looked at it primarily from a energy standpoint, um, to see, to look at that, what the impact would be on the difference of pumping, and what we found at the time was that the, there was essentially a long payback period, uh, for that equipment. And so, we sort of ruled that out of time and proceeded on with, um, the line ponds, and that was, uh, brought to the world here back in September, and, um, so we were moving forward with, uh, with that project. And so, this is just a basic schematic of what that looks like, and essentially, I mean, what, what's primarily new are these ponds right here. And so, we would be looking at, uh, reconstructing, at, at the time, we were looking at reconstructing both sets of ponds that, uh, this, which is, are located across the road. And I've got, I have a photograph, you're probably familiar with that, but I'll, I'll get to that here in a second. Um, but this was really the bulk of the improvement, and, um, you know, so the costs associated with that largely were for the excavation work, uh, for concrete work, for lining, and, as well as the, uh, pipeline to bring the flow back down to, uh, to return the water to the head of the plant. So, that constituted, uh, the majority of the cost of the project. And, uh, in our draft preliminary design report, that was in the order of about three and a half minutes. So, uh, what, we commenced then by, uh, conducting some field work, both, uh, getting some more topographic survey data to be able to, uh, come up with our, you know, accurate layout here for, for the facilities up there, as well as geotechnical investigation and just, you know, characterizing the site. Uh, one of the things we did find was on the pond that was more recently constructed, it looked like there was a fair amount of seepage, uh, occurring there, and so that helped us to, uh, identify, you know, some additional site work improvements that would be necessary to, you know, probably remove that soil and recompact it, so that, that boosts the cost there somewhat. As well as just the, sort of the characterization of the amount of rock and the fact that on the other set of ponds that you're, it's basically carved right into the rocks. So it would be a good amount of rock excavation here to be able to deal with those ponds. Um, so we, we conducted that field work in the fall. And from there, we, we integrated that information and kind of over the holidays and such. But we submitted a preliminary, a draft preliminary design report at the beginning, uh, right at the beginning of February of this year. And over the course of doing that and as district staff review that, I guess, we, we sort of came to some collective conclusions here on the project that made us rethink the, the scope of the project. And the first involving the controls and the integration of the backwash and the recovery process with the overall plant controls. And, uh, with the plant, with a lot of the facilities, and it's, it's not entirely unique, but it is, um, the amount of manual operation of the facility, I think, is, does, there are some unique aspects to that. And so that has an impact on how that recycled water is returned to the plant. And so that, that sort of added a level of complexity here that we needed to address. And then likewise, the second point on flow equalization. And there's some recent data that district staff had pulled together and identified. We, we had originally identified that there was gonna be a need for flow equalization, but, uh, the, the quantity of it was, uh, we'd underestimated here initially. And so I think now we're looking at, you know, greater equali- flow equalization volumes. And so.
Can you explain that a little bit?
I sure can.
About what, what flow equalizations, why it's needed, and what it's for, that'll help them.
Absolutely, and that's the, the purpose of the next slide. So again, back to this ten percent recycle rate and, you know, what, again, the goal here is to be able to control and put an upper limit on how much water, how much of the processed water is returned to the head of the plant. And again, that's, that's from a public health standpoint. And so we're trying to keep that below ten percent of the total plant flow. And so during many times of the year, that's not an issue for a couple of reasons. One, especially in the summertime when plant flows are gonna be higher, because customer demand is higher. Ten percent of that flow is obviously a bigger number, and so you can return more of that flow. And at the same time, a lot of times you have the benefit of having a better treatment. And so your amount of washwater may not, you know, isn't gonna go up at that same rate. So you're able to comfortably stay below the ten percent. At other times of the year, uh, it though, it can become a problem because you can have the exact sort of flip. You can have lower customer demands, lower plant production, and then you can run into a storm, a, say, a particular water quality event in the watershed or so that requires more frequent backwashing. And so the, the purpose of the equalization then is to basically serve as a, as a holding reservoir to, when you do run into those situations, so that you can store the water temporarily and then kind of gradually control the fee rate back to the plant. And so this is a graph here, this was, you know, again, some of the more recent data. And so what the red line shows you is, uh, and again, this was, this was data that was pulled together by Neil, I believe it was. And so the red line basically shows that volume that needs to be held, and it's, and it's a collective number. So you can see that, you know, and these blue lines right here show the actual washwater that's generated. So when these lines are close together like this, and, you know, here we're in the end of October, so I think we're already coming off into, you know, a lower production period, that you, every time you, you know, generate that washwater, you have to store a little bit more of it, and it just sort of keeps building and building until you get up to this point here. And this is a continuation of, this is a sort of part two of, of a graph here. So this event actually started, I think, a week prior to that. So it started at zero, eventually got up to 1.2 million gallons. And then, once these washwater, uh, the frequency of the washwater gets expanded out a little bit, then that recovers and comes back down. But, you know, this number here, I think originally when we were first looking at that, we were thinking in the order of, you know, under a half a million gallons of storage, which, you know, we were looking at holding in the ponds itself. But where we're looking at, you know, a single event here where it gets up to, you know, over a million gallons and it, you know, the next event, it could be larger. And, you know, we just don't know, I mean, there's a, you know, fairly limited amount of data, um, based on the current treatment practices here. So, you know, it's, it's, again, it could be more than that, we, we just don't know. So what we, a- any questions about that event?
How many gallons is in, in one of the holding?
Each holding pond held, and so each hold- held, holding pond was divided into two. And it was in the order of, I think, three to four hundred thousand gallons of what, um, each one was capable of, of holding here.
The whole pond?
It, it was for, it was essentially half of.
A half of one pond, yeah.
Can we demo the old treatment plan and put a tank in the yard that will hold this?
Demoing the old plant's part of this process.
Part of the structure?
Part of this whole project, and he'll show you in the aerial.
Is the demo of that plant is?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Is that that big?
Yep, we're gonna demo it. Demo it before we pay it off.
I want to make use of a helicopter.
So what that led to then was, again, sort of reevaluating the overall approach and the overall project and, and the process for treating and recovering the washwater. And so what this is, is, this is sort of a listing then of the new facilities here and the new pieces of the puzzle then that would go into that. And so whereas before, we were primarily just talking about improvements to both the north and the south ponds, now we're talking about focusing just on the south ponds and not touching the north ponds here and about them, because, and we'll talk about why. But these are all of the, the components then that would go into the new process. And so, and I'll just walk through these here real briefly and feel free to stop and ask what we're going along with. One of the first items there was looking at, um, basically these two here are related. So you've got the flow equalization at 1.2 and possibly planning for, you know, a little bit of safety factor on top of that. And so we've got, um, right now we show in two locations. One would be in a second washwater holding tank, which would be next to the existing one. And what that provides is some additional redundancy. I think that tank is original to when the, the new plant was constructed. And there's no way to, to go around that and there's no backup to that. So this, one option would be to look at adding a second tank. That tank by itself is only in the order of 200,000 gallons or so, so that wouldn't be enough. And so that's where we'd be looking at a much larger flow equalization basin to pick up the slack and basically serve as that function. Next, we'd be looking at, uh, basically a new pumping scheme. So the, whereas before we were relying on the existing pumps to just pump the water up to the ponds and let it settle out there and then return the water, now in combination with these packaged, and, and so now we're revisiting the package plates of our option. But it, but it's serving a different purpose now, it's not just for energy conservation, it's actually providing, uh, better process control. And, you know, and we're thickening the sludge at the same time, so we're, we're kind of getting double duty out of that. But what this requires then is a little bit more precise pumping control and as well as, you know, we've got different hydraulics now. Now instead of pumping all the way up the hill, we're only talking about pumping to a lower elevation. And so, uh, we're looking at, you know, new pumps with variable frequency drives, and those are attachments to the motors that allow the pump to speed up and slow down and be able to control that rate of flow much more accurately through the treatment process. So it, it provides the flow equalization, but more importantly for the treatment equipment, it provides, um, pretty steady state controlled flow through there and, and better treatment process. Yeah, Bill?
This sounds like a lot of money, and my mind immediately says, how are we going to recoup millions of dollars out of this thing? Is there a way for us to get some payback out of it other than recycling the water itself?
You know, and, well, and I don't know, I, I, I've got the.
This isn't a.
Unfortunately, the EPA, I don't think is interested in us recouping money, they're just telling us what we have to do.
The, the best upside to this project is that we're gonna save four to five hundred acre feet a year. That right now goes down the stream.
Okay, how much is that worth an acre foot, we're selling it for?
Uh, well, I, I, I didn't count that yet. I'll have that number when you make a decision. But just to equate it, we were looking at probably a million and a half for the bladder dam, which was gonna provide 750 acre feet of storage, but not every year, so it's kind of equivalent to that.
Except in the expense side of it.
Well, this isn't an expense, I don't think we really, it's not an A and B question, it's not a yes or no question. We have one, we have one box to check and yes is it, and that's, it's just how we approach this project is where we can conserve money, where we can optimize it for longevity, I think is really, should be our goal versus dollars.
Well, I remember, I remember one of the first.
One of the things that I always talk, Bill and I both say, don't build a Clendenon version, which is what the circle is of our solution.
Let's, I remember one of the first meetings that I started attending, when I knew I was gonna be running for the board, and you mentioned that we perhaps could save up as much as 600 to 650 acre feet a year by recycling it, so either four, five. So that's a pretty significant amount of water to re-save.
It is.
Yeah?
Yeah, the value's the value, I mean, I'll, I'll run some numbers so you know what it is, but.
Any savings on PG&E bill by running more efficient pumps?
No.
The public ask questions?
Yep, I will. You need to ask him, sorry.
Fine, Ward, if you got a question right now.
Is it de-watering based on what used to be an evaporation bond?
Uh, essentially, I mean, what they have, what they're using right now, if we wanna call that a, a, an evaporation.
It's a sludge bond.
Right, exactly. But, yeah, but, you know, at the same time, it's, it was by adding the underdrain system in there to be able to speed the de-watering process afterwards, so, but, and, and to increase the capacity of it, because if, if you've seen them empty or so, you know that, you know, the ones that are on the south end of that area, one of them's actually relatively shallow and you've got, uh, you know, kind of a big berm area that we were looking at taking out, just expanding the, the capacity of it, so.
As I understand and remember from the previous meetings that we've had on this and I've been observing, uh, this is mandated by the state. And by a certain date, whether that's 2015, they can start charging us up to a dollar a day per meter, which is not very much, but when you have 10,500 meters, that's quite a stack of money, is that true?
They charge by the gallon.
By the gallon, okay.
Gallon of discharge.
Somebody said a dollar, figure out a dollar a meter, I don't know what it is, but. And then the other thing that was said, you know, right now, and I got this from Jim when I had my tour, we're pumping that water up and most of it, or all of it, if it doesn't run over the top, is actually percolating down into the reservoir.
Right.
And that water is much purer than the lake water that's in the gig, I would.
A lot of times.
But that doesn't make any difference to fishing game. So anyways, it's kind of between a rock and a hard spot.
Like I said, this isn't an A and B question. That, we, we're not, we don't have a choice in this, we don't, the only thing we can do is choose the best solution and make it a longevity solution, I think would be the only way we're spending the, the rate payer's money in the wisest way.
Now the big old round tank that's out there with the treatment plant, that would be changed or be used or painted or some damn thing.
Removed.
Well, I think he's got a picture of the old tank right behind Roger's head right now.
Yeah, right there.
Right, yeah, so.
No, that's not the tank.
Right there, yeah.
There it is, okay, yeah.
How long's it been since that tank has been used? Quite a while.
Ninety-five.
Ninety, oh, ninety-five, fifteen, twenty years ago.
Still paying for it.
Still paying for it, yeah.
Still paying for it, oh dear.
That was a well bought plant.
I think they wrote it off though.
They may have wrote it off, but we're still.
Still paying for it.
Still paying for it, huh?
Go ahead, Roger.
So schematically, you know, this is what it looks like, um, you know, this is the existing raw water tank, which is right there, just kind of for illustration purposes. Here, right here is, you know, where the washwater comes from out of the treatment plant, which is this tank right there. And so, again, with all the features that we listed before, if we look at adding a second tank that provides redundancy in this holding area, and then that water we would be pumping in, we'd be trying to use the existing pumps, again, it's different head, but, you know, because we're not pumping to all the way up here to the top where the ponds are. But, um, but we'd be looking at trying to reuse the pumps there, basically be able to pump the water into this equalization tank. And that tank is, uh, pretty large in order to, and right now we've sized it for, you know, for the purposes of estimating the cost, we'd size that for one and three quarter million gallons, so that, basically the, the combined total for this second tank right there, as well as the new equalization tank, was in order of about two million gallons. And we can look at that here more closely, but just kind of for a placeholder number, we thought, well, that, that puts, I think, a pretty good safety factor in there just to, you know, make sure that we can.
So the tank behind your head's about 800,000? That, that tank right there, how much is that? No, no, the tank, the, the actual picture, the real picture you got of the tank?
This right there is, I think, about 200,000 gallons.
200,000, okay.
Is that the old one?
That's the, that's the existing one, yes. Right. And so then from there, the water would be pumped, these are the, the new pumps with, you know, again, more efficient motors and variable frequency drives that allow you to pump the water into these incline plate settler units. And right now, I think our, our current cost estimate, we, we've kind of gone back and forth looking at one versus two, and I think right now we've settled on one initially with planning for space for a future one, you know, again, for added redundancy down the road.
Now there's incline, incline s- plates, that you called them?
Yes.
Will those be on the uphill side, up by where those current ponds are at, or where will they be located?
They would be located, I, I think it's my next slide, I think I'll, that'll show where that is. And, and, you know, there are different ways we can do this, uh, the way we had originally laid this out.
How would we clean those?
Clean these? Um, they're actually.
Self cleaning?
You know, mainly typically what you have is you have sort of a working platform around the upper end and you can kind of get in there, you know, from the top and hose them down. You put like a, you know, a, a pressure water line there that you can go in there and hose them down.
Well, as I understand, the current ponds are now, in fact, I looked at some of the material and it's non-toxic. It was, uh, they basically let it dry up and they get in there with a piece of equipment and haul it out. It's stockpiled, there was a big stockpile, I don't know if you've hauled it off yet or not. Is, is, huh?
That wouldn't happen in these plate settlers here, these plate settlers here, what they're designed to do is get the solids to thicken up and settle to the bottom. And then you basically pump it out as a slurry.
Okay.
And send it up to the ponds where it does then.
Okay. But when you get rid, when you wanna get rid of the slurry, well, how do you get rid of it?
Pump it.
Pump it.
Yeah, so the, so the.
I don't mean down. That's evaporated and then.
Maybe we need to look at that slide.
So, so the slurry that gets pumped up to these, the ponds. And so, you know, this part of the process is similar in a lot of respects to, you know, what you're doing right now. The main water then, and this is, you know, also one of the keys that, you know, as we're laying the facilities out, is trying to set these plate settlers up high enough so that we can actually flow by gravity and then turn the water back to this point right here, you know, so at, at a lower elevation. So that elevation there is, is somewhat tied to the maximum water surface elevation of this tank as well as here. So anyway, it's, you, you can see schematically, there's, there are a lot more arrows, there are a lot more places where the water and the solids are going. And, um, so it just, you know, it's a different project. But it's, it's also, it's a robust process, and so you've got, you've got a lot of redundancy here. We've got, you know, the ability, part of the thing we've been looking at here is the ability to bypass this tank if, in the future, we're looking at a steel tank, and steel tanks need to be taken out of service periodically, recoded, painted. So to be able to actually pump the water directly up here and use these ponds temporarily while anything like that happens, or whether we need to bypass the, the place itself, and, you know, basically be able to, you know, rely on, on the nature for that.
Well, I remember one of the, in fact, I wasn't on the board yet, so it must have been in October or September, we were looking at 2.6 million was a figure that was out.
Yeah, I think so.
And, uh, you say robust, well, when somebody like you tells me it's robust, I immediately see dollar signatures real quick. So maybe we're too early to talk about dollars.
Well, I think we're two slides away.
Okay, good.
And, and again, this is, this is an aerial photograph, and so where we're looking at is, and then my next slide will actually show it on there, but essentially looking at this equalization tank. First of all, the, the second washwater tank would be constructed here. Again, one scenario would be it would be constructed here next to this one. And for those of you that, you probably all are familiar with the topography out there, I mean, you're sort of perched on a hillside there. And so this is not inexpensive real estate here to construct. It's gonna, you know, you've got a fairly significant, you know, structural retaining wall here, foundation and all that, just to make it ready to accept the tank. The larger equalization tank would essentially go to this area there. And what we've been looking at currently has been basically to put the plate settlers up here. Again, that gives us that elevation to be able to back or feed the treated water back, and the tie-in point is down here so that we are downstream of the tank and the pond. So, you know, we're looking at a new pipeline coming down to this area. The solids then, or the, the slurry that's coming off of the incline plates would essentially go underneath the road here and then up to the ponds. And so, I think. And, so, I think, go to the next slide. So again, that just kind of zooms it a little bit, so it's a little different scale here, but again, the second washwater tank, flow equalization, uh, incline plates, one, and then space for future, and then, you know, then various pipelines, uh, going up the hill, as well as uh, to the, the final recycled, uh, containment point there, so. Any questions about that here so far?
Diggs, the incline plates, the reason you're thinking of a, a secondary set maybe necessary, would that be because they're gonna tighten up the regs? And we might have to get more, or are you thinking of, of growth, and we might have to treat more water?
Well, there's redundancy factor which helps you take one off while you clean the other one.
The other one, exactly.
You can deal with it now, uh, the other thing that I'm always reminding everybody of is, yeah, we, part of this design is based on our pristine watershed.
Yes.
So if we have a fire in our watershed, our, the component of dirt in our water could increase considerably, which will impact the capability of a plant like, of a process like this. You may need additional plate settlers to deal with the additional amount of sludge you're generating.
So I like that you've got a, you know, a redundancy package in there, just, I wonder what you were basing it for.
The question I have is with the plate thing, that's where the McNabb Cypress is, so it's a sitting on Serpentine Rock, which is essentially, um, what's the fiber?
Asbestos?
Asbestos, and it's not a very good thing to, to build anything on, I would think, so.
It's fire retardant.
No, but it's soft rock, it'll break.
Talc.
Huh?
Talc, called talc, talc, the talc.
Yeah, but, yeah, so.
Also the state.
How are you gonna build that thing for its secure, on that kind of?
I'm sure they'll know a way to anchor it in.
Well, I, I don't know how deep that Serpentine Rock is, I don't know.
Yeah, well, and that would then part of the scope then, you know, if we, as we move into that, would be to bring our geotech back out and start exploring those areas, so I mean, we have, we're we're aware of the Serpentine that's there, and we'll have to make the design, you know, accordingly. I, one of the good news is, I mean, from a, from a foundation standpoint, you know, structural engineers, I think, generally like it, I mean, it's, it's, you know, good, pretty solid material, I mean, we have to, you know, take its properties into account, but uh, it's a whole lot better than constructing on, is the, yeah, clay or fill or anything like that, so.
I was, I was just thinking, comparing it with lava camp, anyway.
The pump lines?
Yes.
You're transferring one on a long distance here, are those underground or above?
Uh, these are mostly buried, um, the one part where we're looking at it being above ground would be to run parallel to the raw water line, um, just because it's, you've got sort of a difficult creek crossing to get here, but, uh, most of this is, is buried. Now, go, going through this area here, since you've got, um, you've got a lot of existing piping, you know, the, the raw water line crosses right here, that's one of the things we would be looking at here, is, is kind of how this whole crossing area goes, but most of this would be buried, including once we go up the hill, um, you know, just.
That, that would be running, that would be running in conjunction to the Magalia bypass, I guess that's what we call it, the, the Magalia bypass.
They're pretty close to it.
Yeah, pretty.
For a little while.
On the other side of this middle way.
Yeah.
Yeah, beyond the other side of the, yeah. And looking, no matter what, someday, somebody, some group, what I suppose would, would be part of it, will be doing something with that dam, the roadway or whatever it is, and this would, they could go over the top of this with a, whatever. You know what I'm talking about? There's a bridge there now.
Yes, okay.
And someday, that's gonna all change, no doubt about it. And, uh, so this, they could go right over the top of it, build a bridge or whatever.
Over what we constructed, you're saying?
Yeah, say like if they build a four lane highway through there, which someday's gonna happen. Yeah, and, uh, they would be able to go across the top of this without any adjustments.
All depends on where they put their bridge.
Yeah, that, yeah.
I mean, we, we, initially here, we're looking at supporting it from underneath the existing, uh, bridge and the apartment there.
Yeah.
I think that section is property we own though, right?
Yeah.
Even where the road is.
Yeah.
So we have prior rights that. Believe that's, we're talking about the section that PID owns, where they relocated the road, so therefore, if they need to build a new bridge, those pipes have to move, they'll have to pay to move them.
They'd have to move, yeah, I understand that.
Any other questions?
No.
So, this was the, the cost slide, so our, our current estimate here for the facilities is, as I say, just under eight million dollars. And it sort of breaks down by, you know, for the second washwater tank, as well as the structural foundation work and, uh, the canyon wall for that, we had a little over a million dollars. Uh, equalization tank is, you know, again, we're talking a, a significant, uh, sized tank, uh, and we contacted a couple, several uh, tank manufacturers, and this isn't just for the tank itself, it's the, the demo work, taking out the existing structure, um, and just, you know, all of the, the work associated with the, with that tank. Right now, we're looking at, at, we base that on, um, on a welded steel tank, uh, and that size, that's pretty common. We can certainly, in the evaluation, you know, look at other materials, one of the things that, you know, George and I have been talking about is, you know, whether we would look at more of a of a cast in place concrete tank, and, you know, what all that might entail, so, I mean, there, there are different options we can consider for that.
I'd have to go back and look at my notes, and I keep all that kind of stuff, but I can't carry it with me, uh, what happened to our two point six?
We added a few more pieces to the puzzle here.
It's a little more robust.
Because what we were gonna do, and this is from Kevin, we were anticipating it, I think George, you had some input on that too, uh, we were gonna take our one point six capacity fee would leave one million, you know, 'cause I asked this question right after the last one, you know? And so we'd have to cough up, figure out now, where it's seven point, where eight million dollars, but, but, yeah.
Well, just so you know, we're, Kevin's been working on options for financing, so we're trying to get more info on that. There's some low interest rate financing, we are working with Roger, before we come back to you, to fine tune this number, get it. But I, as I told staff, we're gonna have a meeting and decide must haves versus wanna haves, and get the wanna haves out of there, if there is any. And finalize kind of where things are going, what we're gonna do, and may, hopefully, tune that number down a little. Kevin's already talked to IBank, which we can get, we have a good chance of getting financing of two million dollars from them at very low interest rates. I was at one.
One six, one seven.
One six, one seven percent interest rate, and then, um, whatever the difference is, we'll probably have to go out and borrow four as well, so.
I understand.
It's the only way, we just don't have enough cash in the bank.
Yeah. So you'd have all that under your one, one fifty-two, where we have that meeting, that would all be spelled out?
The best we can at that point.
Best I ever said. Yeah, no, okay.
It's only seven hundred and fifty dollars.
And then Roger's crystal ball will have arrived, you know, in the mail.
That's what she told me, I said, where the hell are we gonna get the one million dollars?
Seven hundred and fifty dollars per meter.
That's what you said.
So, and, so, in addition to the construction numbers, uh, you know, one of the things we were gonna, uh, come back, uh, with is also, you know, what the additional engineering work that's entailed for doing that, and it's, there's more stuff to do, uh, as well as additional, you know, cert, uh, field work, or geotech, you have to be able to, um, you know, look at the site and make sure, you know, identify where everything's gonna go, and then, uh, geotechnical exploration work in those areas. Uh, schedule wise, obviously, we're, we're sort of starting again here in terms of, you know, looking at preliminary design, looking at some alternatives here that, you know, we're, we're still working on with staff. And then from there, uh, you know, once we get a preliminary design that everybody's in agreement on, and the, the cost is, you know, where it needs to be and such, then uh, we would go into, into the, the final design, and then ultimately into construction, and so, you know, that, these are you know, rough duration here that we're looking at, so looking at roughly, you know, towards the end of two thousand fifteen, you know, on, on sort of an average, uh, construction sched, you know, of, of average project schedule here, both from design and, and the construction window, so.
When does our permit run out?
Two fifteen.
Maybe twenty fifteen.
Well, I was gonna say, it's not the end of twenty fifteen, it's early, wasn't it, yeah?
But, we, we've talked to the regional board, and if we're making progress and going out to bid, et cetera, we, we can likely get an extension to our current permit.
If we're just sitting here doing nothing, then, then we're gonna get a fine, yeah. If we're in, if we're in the process.
Quite generally, it's that way, if you're making an effort, you know, got some facts and.
It, it, are you looking, I'm aware the yard's been settling, where Phil was putting in for that old plant we're talking about demoing. Is that right, Bill, is it, there's settlement, or I know there's big cracks in the asphalt.
There's settling around, but that old plant itself, as far as I know, is not settling, I don't believe that even sits on Phil, I'm pretty sure that sits on.
It's on hardpan there.
Oh, okay. Is the tank gonna be bigger?
So we'll have a good foundation.
Than the concrete one?
So it's, we'll have a good foundation.
Should.
Got it.
The, the tank that we were looking at would be bigger in diameter, so, you know, we, obviously, can shift it one way or another here, and that's part of what the geotech would help us determine.
Can't just use the old panels as foundation and kind of cone shape it out?
Can you go back to that area? Just so you're kind of brought up to speed on some of the things we're still working on and kicking around from staff's idea, rather than building this expensive tank here, uh, we're working with Roger to consider the location down here where the old washwater ponds are, and, and building it in concrete, so that it takes a, a more general contractor can do that kind of work, so it's not as specialized as a steel tank design. It doesn't need a roof, um, and it, and the concrete will have more expandability.
So it does or does not need a roof?
Does not need a roof.
Roof, okay, yeah.
Um, and then another thing we're, we're kicking around at this point, and we'll see how far we can get with it, is then we would put the plate settlers up here, and then potentially, as a replacement to fixing this pond, we're doing some preliminary look at what's called a filter press, or some mechanical means of squeezing the water out of the dirt, so that we don't have to passively dry it in a pond, we would actively, um, press the water out of the dirt, and then we would take care of that dirt on a regular basis, put it in a dumpster, have it hauled off, and not have to wait till every summer to deal with it. Still don't know if that, cost of that, how that balances with that, or if, you know, how close we'll be able to get to that number before we have you talk, but we're gonna try.
Neat idea. Ken, I know you just got here, so I'm sure you're just loaded with all kinds of questions.
I talked to George about this before.
Okay, did you have any questions for Roger?
I have the power point too, so we can go to that.
Unfortunately, we're at the end of the, I think Roger's presentation.
Thing that I'm interested in is, uh, you know, not building a quality tank for drinking water to hold the sludgy water. Get a, the cheapest container bathtub, concrete, open air, to the, to the elements, uh, reservoir that we can, I would think.
A Lily Cup.
Excuse me?
A Lily Cup.
Yeah, we had penciled out, you know, here just in the last couple of days here, looking at, you know, if we were to go with more of a cast in place uh, concrete tank instead of a circular steel tank, um, and it, and it comes close, so I mean, part of what you have to look at with, with the concrete is, you know, what are, what are the physical dimensions, as soon, if you try and reduce the footprint, you obviously raise the height, and as soon as you raise the height, your walls get thicker. Thicker. And so, I mean, it's, it's kind of a balancing act here, trying to find what the optimal size is, and in, and in your case here, where you've got limited space, uh, you know, free space to be able to to fit some of that in there, then, you know, you have to kind of, you know, take that into account, so. But, and what I was gonna say then is that, the, the costs were, I think, close enough where I, I think it's worth looking at here in a little bit more detail, um.
Well, let's, to go back, you were talking about being robust, and I'd have to go back to my notes and look at it, but we went from two point six million, when we first started talking about it. And in fact, I went up there to Jim and looked at it, now we're at eight million. What, and inflation hadn't hit that bad, what made it go up so much? We're talking six, we're talking six million dollars.
The extra, the extra washwater tank, the extra equalization tank, and the plate settlers, those are the big ticket items that.
Well, I noticed on the ponds that you had a one point eight or a billion for, for reshaping the ponds, and I've done a lot of that kind of stuff, uh, for land leveling and all kinds of stuff, well, anyway, so that's one point eight five. That include the concrete, the lighters and all that, or just the reshaping them?
No, that, that was for the, basically, the complete improvement.
Complete.
The liner and the concrete work and.
Whole bit.
Headwork structured for the flow of water to come in and then flow out, you know, that sort of thing, so. So, to answer your question, I mean, I, I'd say it really sort of came down to two main items. Uh, one was the integration of the, the treatment process, of the recycle process with the plant operations, and having dug down into that here more deeply, it, it's clear that, um, being able to control that flow back into the plant and not have to have Bill and staff go and constantly change the, the chemical dose for all of their chemical metering pumps, because this water is coming in intermittently, that required sort of a rethinking of the entire, you know, approach, and so before, it was, you know, obviously fairly simple, we were looking at, you know, using the existing pumps and, you know, so the water, as soon as it was coming in, it was essentially going out, and it was being pumped up to the ponds, and then sort of, you know, returned, uh, it was envisioned to be returned at more of an intermittent basis, but again, from a, from an integration of that with the, with the primary treatment process, that, that sort of changes, that, you know, changes the, the story on that, so.
Well, one of, one of the things that, that I'm thinking, that myself, what I've always tried to do, is quite, uh, uh, easy to be a pity wise and a pound foolish. And that's why we gotta look, so that doesn't happen, you know, looking down the road, and maybe that tank that's out there you're gonna demolish is a shining example of that, and a couple of other things, you know, but, uh.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, is I don't, like, we wanna look at the number and think we're all concerned, as board members, about the, the final dollar that this is gonna cost, but we better be looking at longevity for our investment as our, really our key component. 'Cause if we're not looking at that, we're gonna have another, you know, water treatment plant that made it ten years, and then we're still paying for it. This is gonna be a long-term investment, as with anything, big project that we do, and we need to make sure that it lasts. We should be able to get, what, twenty-five, thirty years before any improvement is necessary?
Yeah, the, the big things are.
Well, things are gonna wear out, there's no two ways, but I mean, as far as the overall design of the system, if we do this right the first time out, we should be able to make it twenty-five, thirty years before we have to do any redesign or addition to the system, wouldn't you think? Unless, unless we get some kind of major build out of Paradise, I don't, as John Ramali has reminded us, numerous times, there's only three. We don't have that much build out.
You know, look, look at this type of money and stuff, is there any plan or something similar to this that we could go look at? To actually see the thing work?
That's one of the problems. Staff's been, staff's been running around, and we've, you know, one plan will have some of it that works this way, and another plan will have some of it that works this way, but nobody operates the same as we do.
Those ponds in Nevada, what were their customer base, weren't they only like six thousand or something like?
Bad irrigation district?
Yeah, the ones where we saw the ponds, the lined, the lined basins.
No, they have a lot of customers.
Do they have a lot more customers than that, well, then I meant that used that particular, that, those settling ponds.
Dustin made a good point when we talked about it today, they can take their water and put it in a canal, 'cause they have ag customers.
Uh, oh, then, okay, I was going, how do they get away with just using those, 'cause we had talked about those ponds were relatively close to the size of our ponds.
That was part of why some of this changed, is we went up and looked at their plant, and unfortunately, plants are all different, and our plant is way different than most other people's plants. And so after looking at their plant, we're more trying to mimic their process by adding the plate settlers before it goes to the ponds, because basically, theirs, their whole process is going, it's working on a sludge thickening before it ever gets to the pond. And so that's what we're trying to do with those plate setters, get that sludge as thick as we possibly can, so we send as minimal water as possible through the ponds. And we're just recycling the last majority of it, just straight back to the plant.
Yes.
Right off the bat.
You know, the, Nevada. In other, Nevada Water District, instead of running it up the hill to a pond, they just put it to their irrigation ditch and away it goes.
They could if they have to, right now, they're recycling it.
They're recycling it.
Everything that they make.
They don't need that EQ storage, because they have that backup plan.
So, so what are some of the other public agencies doing? I mean, are they similar alternatives, similar price ranges?
You know, it's, it's a pretty wide range, I mean, where, where folks have the land, space, uh, for, for a lot of folks going with, uh, ponds and lagoons or something, that's still fairly common. You know, one of the facilities that, you know, we had identified early on, I think, for the Platte County Water Agency, they are, you know, are still going through startup here with the Deskins system, and, you know, there's, you know, I mean, startup is, you know, is always gonna be problems and all that, I think they're experiencing kind of a high level of that here at the moment. They're, they think they'll eventually get there, but, I mean, people are using all sorts of different things, and so, I mean, the, the, the costs, you know, obviously, you know, can, can range quite a bit. Ponds are, are nice when you have the space, and when you, um, you know, when, when you, when you have maybe more of the automation too, to be able to, you know, when you're returning, uh, your recycled water on an intermittent basis, that you can, you know, make adjustments automatically or so, you know, where things are dialed in on the flow, then, you know, that's something. But, you, you know, I think, I think you guys have established a, a, an operating practice here that works, and it works well for, for the treatment plant that you have, and so, you know, to, to go in and, you know, change all of that for this, uh, you know, that's, that's a whole nother added level of complexity.
Yeah, one of the things we've found, because we've talked about an automatic feed rates for our coagulants, but it's, what we found, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but it's very difficult to automate that with the water, the clean water quality we have. Those work really well when you have 10, and 20, and 30 in to use, you deal with on a regular basis. But, our water's almost too clean to be able to, um, automate your feed rates, because it just can't sense the change fast enough to make a difference.
We, we talked a little bit the other day about, Bill mentioned iron and some other products where we could change away from the chlorine based products. It gives us that one byproduct that's such a.
The aluminum?
The, not the aluminum, aluminum, but the other one, the dichloro benzene or whatever it is.
That's the byproduct of chlorine?
Yes.
It's a byproduct of using.
The chlorine gas.
That's one of the problems, because we, we need to clean that up. He talked a little bit about iron as one of the things they substitute with, but then he's afraid it might deteriorate some of the concrete pipes we have in the system, but, which are working just fine. I, I just was curious about these other, um, treatment products that might change the, the design, and I'm sure you guys have talked about it, but could you include us in the?
Well, Jim, Jim, when we started this process, Jim Passanese put out a memo, and we'll, we'll regenerate that for you before the next meeting. And we figured 2.5 to 3 million dollars in plant changes to be able to meet this, but we didn't calculate in pond repair, because regardless, even if we maintain our permit and get rid of some of those constituents, we're still gonna have to line the ponds. They're not gonna let us get away with.
So we still might be at 5 or 6 million going that route.
Yeah, well, it sounds better than 8 million.
And still have a permit.
And hope that they don't come after another.
Well, they, they, exactly, they come back and say, well, we changed our minds again, and, uh, and that's it. And I think you said we were pretty good at the process that we have.
Really use the.
Yeah, you, well, yeah, okay, I didn't wanna sugarcoat, over sugarcoat it, but, you know, it's.
Bill told a good story yesterday, just kind of bring us here, we have this MPDS permit, we had one, and we were testing dichloro.
Dichloro bromo methane.
Chloro.
Yes.
And then, and everything was fine, and then we went to monthly, and then they went from monthly to now you can only use half of what your average, you've delivered in the past. So our worry is, what's the next thing they decide they don't like in the water?
Yeah.
And we do this all over again.
Yeah.
Because like Bill said, it's a national pollution discharge elimination system, that means they don't wanna discharge.
All right, so either way, we're, we're gonna have to design some kind of settling. Well, like I said, this is an information only item tonight, we're not making any decisions. I don't know, Roger, if you had finished, if you were down to the end of everything that you had there?
Yeah, so the, the next steps here, I think, what we, what George and I had spoken about was, you know, to come back, uh, whether it's a special session or, or next regular board meeting with, uh, you know, we, we refine the cost here a little bit more, as well as look at, you know, what, you know, the engineering side of things is gonna take to, to do that, and have a little bit more concrete number for all of you, um, to kind of work with at that point.
And I noticed you were coming through. We also need a.
Do you understand why an equalization tank is required? You know, that's one part of the discussion I wanted to be in on, I can catch up later on, but.
He covered.
Yeah, he covered it.
He covered, he's got a whole slide on it.
Yeah, well, does the board understand it?
Yeah, we've got redundancy, so if we'd get rid of redundancy and we have to repair a tank, we can't repair the tank.
Well, the equalization also, I understand, rights to keep that 10% at an even flow. So we're not doing this, and maybe, maybe we went over.
On a normal basis.
I have his PowerPoint, so I can kinda reiterate it.
Yeah, we can do it now, but I, I, I need to go for that again.
On a normal basis, we run just under 10% of washwater produced. But there are periods of the year, and last fall was an excellent example, and I put his graph in the bottom, where we're going along and we're still cleaning and producing washwater at a fairly high rate. And then all of a sudden, what happened here was it started raining.
Raining, yeah.
And the second rain from this town, everybody shuts everything off, they're real good about that.
We've trained them well.
Yes. But, what happens is the plant, as far as their cleaning process, doesn't slow down as fast as the production process does. So we still have to clean clarifiers before we can take them offline, we still have to clean filters before we can take them offline. And that's a multi-day process to start slowing all that stuff down, you can't immediately just slam on those brakes and stop it. Although your production did do that. And so, all of a sudden, you went from where you were doing 10% or right around 10%, to now it's jumping up to 14, 15, 16%.
That charts over five days.
And you can't pull that water back through the plant that same day, so now you're having to hold on to some of your water that you've produced in for multiple days.
Yeah.
Until you finally got the plant washwater slowed down to match the production, and you can start pulling a little bit of actual water back.
Yeah, I, I, I gotta ask a real dumb question, why, why can't we just dump it back in Magalia Reservoir and hold it there? Mix the dirty water with the clean water.
Yeah.
It's the permit.
That's the whole thing, we, our permit won't allow us, the new permit wouldn't allow us to do that.
If you have a point source, which is basically any confined pipe or any, any way to confine flow of water, you need an MPDES permit to discharge that into waters of the United States, so.
And waters of the United States include Magalia Reservoir.
How about if we take the water out of the pond still, and bottle it and sell it to the public? Probably better than the bottled water.
What size is the reservoir? Is that the one that's up on Skyway?
Buried in the ground.
Right, buried in the ground, 3 million or some?
3 million, yeah.
Okay, and how much did it cost us to build that tank? You know?
B-res?
Excuse me?
He was referring to the.
Yeah.
We just spent, we relined it and recovered it for 800 grand. I, I don't remember, it was a very last minute. Actually, the plant didn't, if I remember this right, the plant, the new plant's elevation didn't drive the water into town well enough. So, B-res was a quick build project, so it was done very quickly to get things working correctly.
It was done to generate pressure, is that what it, what it is?
It was done because there wasn't enough pressure head from the plant into town for the demand. So it was, it was built to store water so that if people are taking it away. Yeah, yeah.
I was just trying to wonder why we have it.
Ken, when we, when Ken, uh, when, oh, come on. Our field superintendent who served on the board, when he was on the board, Powers, he explained that some of the ditches going into that thing were 25 feet deep. If I remember right, it was actually forcing the water up into B-res, it's an expansion reservoir with a rubber top. It's like a big inner tube that's full of water, and when we were repairing it, George took it up, and I could see the thing, and. So it expands and contracts with the water supply, and that's, it's a big bladder, that's what it is, only it's, it was rather expensive.
No, not really, it doesn't operate as a bladder, it doesn't pressurize.
It's a floating cover.
If this what, has a cover over it then?
So it's a big giant lake, basically, with a floating cover on it.
Oh, okay.
With a floating cover.
We can look that up, but it, it's a.
But there's no place up to the plant to build something that big. We couldn't build a reservoir like that.
Don't, don't take this wrong, Ken, okay, but your, so your point was, you're, where the question was going.
Well, if we didn't need B-reservoir, maybe we could use that.
Oh, as a, oh, okay, I, I, I was, I was trying to figure out why the question of B-res was.
You know, we got all this space on the other side of Magalia Red Dam that's no good, right? And we're gonna abandon this dam at some point in the future. Um, but I guess not, not soon enough to put the whole, you know, if you build another dam wall upstream of, with the existing dam wall, we, we could have another reservoir right there between the exterior of the new dam wall and the interior of the existing dam.
As soon as any water in Little Butte Creek touches it, it becomes the waters of the US.
Yeah, but I'm talking about just as a holding pond.
But it still would require.
It has to have a place to go out.
But you need a holding pond, I'm, I'm just saying, you got a whole dam, half of it's built, you just need to build another one on the other side of it.
But you need a holding pond to keep water from entering Magalia Reservoir.
We wouldn't, we'd rename it, it wouldn't be Magalia.
We would rename it, uh, yeah, and that was a nice way out of that one, I know, we, we'd rename it, I know, really. Non-Waters of the US.
Sounds good.
Non-Waters of the US, is that what we were gonna call that one?
Oh, I have one other comment, and that's about the concrete tank with the open lid. That, they get anywhere from 50 to 100 inches of rainfall, is that figured into the thing for rainfall filling the tank? You know, we really have some incidents of high water rainfall up there.
It would be.
It, it would be, I mean, we had, we had looked at that initially here, and so we would, we would continue to look at that, and that's, you know, part of the oversizing of it, where that graph there shows.
So you'd actually have.
But, you'd oversize that tank.
Fortunately, it's only direct rainfall, not any runoff, we don't have to worry about going into that tank.
The old sheds that you wanted?
Yeah.
Are we hearing?
Old shed, what, oh, oh, put equipment under.
Yeah, and make it a foot higher, and we're good to go.
Yeah, that would handle any event, wouldn't it? Okay, was there any other questions from the public for Roger?
I just wanna remind the board, at some point, if you keep moving forward, we gotta comply with CEQA. So, technically, we're not committing to any project before we, uh, analyze, uh, the projects under CEQA, including a no project alternative.
How long does CEQA take?
A no project alternative.
How long it takes is how much money it is.
Yeah.
It depends, I'm, I'm guessing the level of review is probably a negative declaration for something like this. And depending on if the district hired a consultant, or if we tried to do it in-house, maybe 2 months to a period of 4 months or so.
Because we only got 24 months.
20, 30 thousand dollars.
Well, it could, it could be kind of going parallel with, with that timeline.
As soon as we make a decision on which direction we're gonna proceed, then we can do environment. Then we can start the CEQA process.
Okay, but I'm just worried about the 20.
There's a, there's a lot of people that write you CEQUAs right now, that industry is still in the jungle, so I don't think you have to worry about that.
One of the ways we're gonna discuss saving money is, it should be a pretty, um, slow impact type of project. So, I, I may be able to handle it, I don't know, with some small assistance.
Saving us money, George.
And unfortunately, saving money again, Ken.
Any other questions for Roger? Thank you so much, Roger, for coming tonight, I know it's late, and we appreciate you.
And Roger, thank you for hanging around to the last, I, I just couldn't get here any quicker, but I appreciate the little bit of.
We, we held off as long as we could, we waited till 9:15, and then we, we said, we, if you're not here, we're gonna start, so. Yeah, we, we were actually done like 8:30, and we did the, I hate to tell you, I hate to tell you this, Ken, we've actually.
Did you ever go through the close?
We've done everything, we, we've, we've had 3 recesses, we've gone slow.
We still have to do 8A.
Took a 20-minute recess.
All of them, we tabled that idea.
Oh, you're right. Can we just put it into old business? Or can we just put it into old business for the next meeting, or do you need a decision on that tonight?
Well, actually, I don't need a decision, based on what it hurts, of one person that was kind of hinging on the decision. Apparently has a residence, so.
Yeah, he's got a residence.
You can do it in June, make it old business.
Let's move.
We need a margin to move it?
It's already been.
He gets to do it.
Yeah, we're gonna table, uh, or move item 8A into old business and revisit it in June.
Well, I thought this is one that we already made a decision on last month.
Well, now we.
We did, we did clarification on it.
We didn't do the, we only did the residential.
We'll explain, we'll explain the whole thing to you in June. Yeah, trust me, it's.
You can stay after and talk to the teacher here.
Yeah, we didn't miss much.
The reason we didn't do it is because two people have to abstain.
This meeting is adjourned.
We need a full board when we do it.